Okay, welcome everyone. It's two o'clock according to my watch or my computer. Uh, call to order the meeting for September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Attendance at the start of the meeting is one hundred percent with Council Jolly, uh, virtually. Um, I need a motion, Council Mackay, to adopt the agenda. Go ahead.
Let the September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two agenda be adopted as presented.
Awesome. No changes from anyone? Call for the vote then? Voting's closed and that is unanimous. Awesome. Presentations. I had an email of registered speakers and they were all consultants. Is that anyone else registered, Joe? Okay. Okay, then I will move on to consent agenda. Who wants to do that one? Go ahead, Council Hughes. Thanks.
That the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved. Six point one, regular council meeting minutes of August twenty-ninth, twenty-two. Seven point two, public taxill agenda report and presentation.
Awesome. Thanks for that call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. All right, our very first agenda item for the day, besides the minutes which we just approved on consent, is seven point one. Uh, the federal electoral boundaries review for two thousand and twenty-two and we have Mr. Trevor Dooley, our manager of government relations. Do you have a presentation, Trevor?
I do have a brief one, Mayor Heron, if Council chooses.
Yep, let's see it.
Did that work? Okay?
That's great. Yep.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Happy to present quickly today on the two thousand and twenty-two federal electoral boundary review that is taking place. Um, so this, uh, the federal, uh, government, uh, reviews the federal electoral boundaries every ten years. Um, there's a three-member commission, uh, that's assigned for Alberta that's currently conducting consultations, uh, regarding their proposal, uh, for how the, how the, uh, electoral writings have been redistributed. Um, so tho- those public hearings are actually starting today and essentially what it, what their proposal does is it divides Alberta into thirty-seven electoral writings and they are legislated to work, uh, to achieve as close to a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and six people per district as possible and that's based on two thousand and twenty-one federal census data. And they also aim to consider communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people and it's comprised of the city of St. Albert, uh, pre-annexation and portions of North Edmonton. And it was established in two thousand and thirteen using two thousand and eleven federal census data. So what the commission has proposed, um, moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of communities of interest or identity and historic and geographic, uh, factors. So currently the St. Albert Edmonton riding as it exists today has a population of just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand people So what the commission has proposed moving forward is that the city of St. Albert would be comprised of the Sturgeon River federal electoral riding. It has a population of a hundred and fourteen thousand. And so city of St. Albert would comprise just over half of that, and the remaining population is comprised of the municipalities listed on 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 the screen. So within the Edmonton metropolitan region, all nine Edmonton districts are now contained solely within the city of Edmonton municipal limits. So that's that's primarily kind of what has changed within the broader region. Other proposed districts around Edmonton are all named after the two largest urban centers within them, other than the Sturgeon River riding. Strathcona County intends to provide a submission to the commission. At the time of writing this agenda report, neither Edmonton, Warrenville, Spruce Grove, or Le Duke intended to submit to the commission. And within the commission's initial report, they have noted that the city of St. Albert is now placed with other Francophone communities north of Edmonton, including Legale and the town of Warrenville. So the process for moving forward is the commission is going to hold a series of public hearings throughout Alberta. That starts today and runs through October fourteenth. They will also receive written submissions until November first. So just to note that, within the writing of this agenda report, the the commission actually clarified they will accept written submissions. If council so wishes to to submit, we don't actually have to attend the hearing in person. The, from there, the commission will submit a final report December fifteenth that a parliamentary committee then has the opportunity to provide feedback on through the spring of next year. And then the commission provides a final copy to the Chief Electoral Officer of Canada, and then the representation order would become effective in September of two thousand and twenty-three. So for today, again, there's there's a public hearing in St. Albert scheduled for September thirteenth that city staff have coordinated securing a spot for Mayor Heron to attend, but now we have the option of doing a written submission or both. Really just wanted to have a discussion with council, solicit councils' feedback and perspective on the city providing a submission to the commission or not. With a menu of options, including to support, as is non-support, so look at reconfiguring the proposed boundary. Recommend the writing name be changed, no action or other. And so city administration has placed a placeholder recommendation that the writing name be changed to St. Albert, Moreville, and that would just to be on the basis of being consistent with the with the ring around Edmonton and and those federal writings. So in terms of next steps, again, soliciting council's position on the commission's proposal, and then seeking Mayor Heron be authorized to present council's position at the public hearing and/or to provide that written submission to the commission before November first. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, Trevor, quick question. Strathcona is proposing not a name change or change, proposing a boundary change to, and I'm just kind of curious what they're proposing and what cascading effect that might lead around the region.
Yeah, I think the last I checked, Mayor Heron is there they're split into two writings and like and are looking to to be within it within a single one. I think when I had initially looked at it, if more changed things on the the east side of of the ring around Edmonton and didn't really make its way to the west.
So because they're just, they're around a hundred thousand people in entire county, aren't they?
I believe that's correct. Yeah.
Yeah. So and then they're aiming for a hundred and fifteen. So I guess it could be a writing that makes sense. Anyway, Council Killig, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the to Trevor administration, was was any consultation done before when they came up with this name of Sturgeon River? How how did that actually come about? Seems weird, like an outlier to the rest of the process.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Council Killig, and through the mayor. Essentially, they they put out their their proposed map for for all of for all of Alberta. And this this is the initial opportunity to provide a response to that. So they didn't do any preconsult, pre-consultation work. This is kind of the first opportunity for input.
Thank you.
All right, Council Brumansky, go ahead.
Thank you through the mayor to Trevor administration. I just would like to know your opinion if this serves any value to St. Albert to change the name and what that value might be, being there is, you know, there's several groups in the boundaries that might be confused about where to vote. The idea to me should be, you know, directing the most people to vote and know where to vote. So in your advice, which way would would affect the numbers of people coming out to vote?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Council Brumansky, and through the mayor, I think we are seeking sort of council's feedback on this and particularly around the nomenclature, but you know, from from my perspective, the majority of the voting electorate would would still lie within the city of St. Albert. And so there's, to your to your point about voting locations, et cetera. That's where the majority of the electrics located and and then looking at the ring around Edmonton, the the commission has suggested that the writings be named kind of after the two largest urban centers within those within those writings.
And just one other question, if I may, would there be voting locations at each of those towns included in this? What's there twelve of them or ten of them?
Yes, that yeah, that's correct. So when when the federal election is held, they they'd be located throughout the throughout the municipalities there, both both the towns and and the rural incorporated areas, Parkland County, Sturgeon County, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Council Mackay.
A really quick, Madam Mayor. I I guess administration, then, did you have the opportunity to reach out to our MP, Michael Cooper, and see if their office was making a presentation or not, or what their feelings were on this name change?
Thanks for the question, Council Mackay, and through the mayor. No, I we didn't have any consultations with with our, weren't our MPs office. However, I have heard that it's a busy schedule at the at the public hearing scheduled at the St. Albert Inn and Suites. And they've got a full slate of of speakers. At that, I'm not, but I'm not privy to who those speakers are at this point.
I can see that when I ran into him at Canada Day, he was unhappy with the name as well and agreed it should be St. Albert, Sturgeon or St. Albert something.
Yeah, that that was my feedback as well, but I wanted to confirm it with administration that they had the opportunity to actually reach out to the office.
The the other thing I, sorry, Council Mackay, is that, again, the once this is referred to a parliamentary committee, there is an opportunity for current sitting MPs to to provide feedback at that point as well.
All right, no more questions. Does somebody? Thanks. Go ahead, Council Mackay.
Yeah, I'll put for the motion, but I guess the motion, I mean, does it, we the motion I would seek is something with specific action that would re, I I believe that either yourself or the deputy mayor should attend to provide both a verbal and a and then we can follow up with the written. So is there an actual motion that identifies that? There it is. Thanks. Ready to proceed?
Yep.
That the that council authorized the mayor to present city council's position to the Electoral Boundaries Commission that's proposed Sturgeon River riding be renamed St. Albert, Mornville.
All right, accept that motion. Do you have any opening comments?
Well, I think this is a first good opportunity that we have to show for all of the reasons identified in the background and all of some of the other concerns in relation to actually potentially this causing confusion. Actually, if you really look at the origin of where the Sturgeon River happens, it actually happens farther west than our boundaries, and it only actually travels ver- a very short distance through this new proposed area. So I I think that Sturgeon River even doesn't adequately describe the area that the boundary would, the new boundary would constitute. So, I mean, I I I'm picking up actually too on a comment made by Council Brumansky, who identifies potential voter confusion and with the majority, the vast majority of residents in this boundary residing in St. Albert, I only think it makes sense to be clear about where this federal riding is. And for all we know, if you actually looked at Sturgeon River, you wouldn't even know it's in this province. It might even be potentially another province. And so how are we supposedly represented in that former fashion? So I believe St. Albert should be the name, whether or not it continues on to be something else, but for sure, St. Albert should be identified, and I believe that you you or the deputy mayor should be there to personally let them know that.
Did you want to change it to include the deputy mayor? I mean, it's the it's the thirteenth, and I've got it by calendar. I am free, so I'll be there.
Well, I think it automatically falls to the deputy mayor if you can go. So I think it's in the motion that if you can't go, the deputy mayor, Mike Killig, will be very persuasive, I'm sure.
Uh, Council Broadhead, comments?
Thing about a mayor, not to prolong the debate, I certainly support this motion. What's intriguing to me is that there's a the form that appears to be evident throughout the rest of the province in naming, and it's this particular riding stands out in in its oddity, I guess. So if we can ask them to move back to their standard form, it would represent our community well. Thank you.
Perfect. I'm writing all this down, but I'm assuming Mr. Dooley are going to give me some speaking notes. But I'll be good. All right, anything to close, Counselor? Okay?
No, I don't think it.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. Awesome. Seven point two was the public tax sale on consent. The motion read as follows. That the city assessor be delegated the responsibility under section four one nine A of the Municipal Government Act to set a reserve bid for each parcel of land on the tax arrears list that is to be offered for sale at the October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two public tax sale. With the condition that the city assessor set the reserve bid as close as reasonably possible to the market value of each property. And number two, that the terms and conditions of sale provided as an attachment to the agenda report entitled two thousand and twenty-two public tax sale be approved. So that was on consent. We're done with that. Seven point three is Solar Farm and Badger Lands. We have Regan Fabe to do a presentation. Did you want to open it up or start?
Your worship, thank you very much. Happy to go right to Regan if you're.
Okay.
Good afternoon, your worship and council. Hello.
Thanks for joining us.
I'll just share my screen here. Just hold on one second. I don't seem to have the ability to share my screen.
Do we have to give him? I think this might be a presentation we want to see.
Oh, there we go. Just popped up. All right, can everyone see that now?
We sure can.
Okay. So the contents of the presentation, I'm going to go through some of the background and then talk about our existing rooftop solar. A little bit of history on the on the Badger Lands, and then talk through the the solar farm concept from what it originated. And then some of the compliance issues that we've run into. I'll talk a little bit about municipal own use generation as well as the hybrid solar farm, and then the analysis that we've done with with Atco and Boost on the commercial solar farm. And then we've done additional analysis. A lot of that's been internal, but we we did rely on Onatko and Boost for the municipal own use generation as well as the hybrid solar farm options. I've got overall economic analysis and then some discussion of some additional costs, risks, and considerations. Some other solar farm options and then potentially the future of the Badger Lands. So to start with, alignment with strategic priorities. This project actually started off solely as a revenue generating infrastructure opportunity. It was it was in our current strategic priority five. There there is obviously an environmental component to it, so it did it does touch into into strategic priority four, which is the green environment strategy as well as resilient infrastructure. And then the latest one that I've added to this is actually the our economic prosperity strategic priority, which is the St. Albert West Area Structure Plan, as well as the integration of annex lands into the city technical plans and studies. And I'll get into those a little bit later, but for the for the public engagement, we have we done significant public engagement engagement for this project. So and we and we've got Cultivate the Conversation website, as well as a survey that I think everyone's aware of. Pivotal research is in attendance if there's any questions regarding the public engagement. And we also have Matt Clark, Brandon Goy, and Michael Azinski in attendance. Matt and Brandon are with Atco. And Michael Azinski is with Boost Energy Ventures. If there's any questions on the reports that were provided to council late last week, so. Talking about the background, so St. Albert's electricity usage, we have two hundred and forty-nine plus electrified sites. Some of the sites are combined, like all of our street lighting is 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 one account. So we we have more than two hundred and forty-nine, but but we have two hundred and forty-nine registered sites. And our total usage is two hundred and sorry, twenty-two thousand, three hundred megawatt hours per year, or twenty-two million, three hundred thousand kilowatt hours per year. And if you look at an average household in Alberta, seventy-two hundred kilowatt hours is is the average usage. So our municipal facilities consume the equivalent of about thirty-one hundred Alberta homes. Our existing rooftop solar, so we've got the DES Leggett, which it's point three megawatts DC, and that was completed in two thousand and seventeen. The first year, we it only started operations in November, in late November, so we only had five hundred kilowatt hours that were produced there. In two thousand and eighteen, it was two hundred and eighty-five thousand kilowatt hours, and then two hundred and eighty-one thousand kilowatt hours in two thousand and nineteen. We had a bad year in two thousand and twenty. The system was down for maintenance from July to October, so we only got a hundred and sixty-five thousand that year. But in two thousand and twenty-one, we're we're back up mostly to where we were, and that's two hundred and sixty-seven thousand kilowatt hours. We had some snow coverage and a little bit of maintenance downtime there as well in twenty twenty-one. Jackcraft is a newer installation. It's similar in size, so point two nine megawatts DC. It, the first partial year, we had ten thousand kilowatt hours, and then the first full year of production, two hundred and ninety-two thousand kilowatt hours. And then the largest installation that we have is Service Place, which is one point one one megawatts DC, and we don't have any annual production data on this one yet because it was completed late last year. But I've done some projections based on the actuals for for our existing as well as some data from Anarchan. So actual, this is the actual production numbers here in the yellow. And the orange is our total grid consumption. So the blue is our total electricity consumption. So projecting forward and and looking at, you know, the percentage of our total usage. We could say that green electricity as a percentage with when we had DES Leggett operating by itself, we're at about one point two nine percent green electricity that was that was being produced and consumed at at our city facilities. And then one point two nine percent again as well for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, when we had that down year, we were down to point nine two percent. Two thousand and twenty-one, with both Jackcraft and DES Leggett, we're at two point seven one percent. And we expect we're going to be at six point seven percent this year with with this with the Service Place installation coming online. And that will decline over time. The the solar panels do degrade over time, so that's built into the into these projections, the degradation of the solar panels, so that will drop over time. I did a bit of a cost benefit analysis on Service Place as well. Looking at a thirty-year life expectancy, our our current municipal price for electricity, two percent inflation, some some additional assumptions you can see there, our capital costs and and what we received in grant funding for the project. And back then, our capital, our our cost of borrowing was two point four percent on a thirty-year debenture that was at the end of two thousand and twenty, so. Based on all those inputs, a cost benefit analysis comes out very close to even. It's it's a if you look at it in net present value, we're slightly losing money because money that we're gaining in the future is worth less than money that is is worth today. But when you, this is just based on the cost of electricity by itself, this analysis. So when you build in the the value of green electricity, so renewable energy certificates or REX, the people purchase those or or companies purchase those in order to reduce their their environmental footprint. So green electricity has a higher value on the market than does, I'll call it, regular electricity or electricity that's produced from natural gas sources. And when you assign the the typical value to the green electricity, then we get a positive IRR, and it's actually higher than what our capital cost was at the time. So so you you could say that this this maybe wasn't a great investment if if you don't consider value. this, this maybe wasn't a great investment if, if you don't consider value in, in the green electricity or, or we didn't get the grant, but between the grant and placing value on the green electricity. I, I, I project a positive IRR for, for this installation. So. Now I'll talk a little bit about the Badger lands. So the, the site itself was acquired in two thousand and five. And there's been a lot of debate over the years about potential uses from affordable housing. Libraries were talked about there, uh, potential church, commercial site, schools, parkland. It was also recreation was, was a key one. And then municipal operations. And because, uh, because nothing was decided, I guess, in, in the interim as the default municipal operations ha- have, have made a lot of use of the site. So I think everyone's aware of the compost transfer station for the mulching of wood waste prior to being hauled away. We've also got some storage, some materials, excess materials from some of our larger capital projects are, are, are stored there as well as our street sweeping materials before those are disposed at landfill. The excess construction materials are actually reused. Um, so, so there's, there's some big, I guess, I call it some green, um, environmental benefits out of, out of reusing some of that excess construction material. We're, we're doing landfill diversion rather than taking that to a landfill and then purchasing additional materials and in future years, um, in future, we're able to reuse some of that material. We've also got some, some drying sites, uh, the material that's removed from excavations as well as our OGIs is dried at a series of bins. And then we've got our hydro vac excavation. So, um, materials that are removed, um, so this is just regular soil materials. The CB and OGI drying material ends up getting hauled to landfill, but we're able to reduce the cost of, of that disposal by doing the drying on the site. The hydro vac excavation materials are suitable for reuse. So we're, we're able to reuse those in, in, in other small capital projects, um, within the utilities group. So. We also have the snow storage area and you can see there's this berm that, that runs along the perimeter of that area. This area is, that is still being used for stormwater retention for the site. So during it, during the rainfall events, that's, that's where the ponding has occurred. And that's, that's part of what's made it difficult to do the environmental site assessment and, and get some good data on, on those low lying areas because they're underwater for, for a good portion of the year. So, um, and, and I think while in, over this last winter, they were able to get some good samples and data from those low lying areas. There's also a portion of the site that's, I would say not utilized. I mean, there's obviously trees, but for, for city municipal operations, this western portion here where the old CN rail bed used to be is not currently utilized. The commercial solar farm was initially, uh, the initial concept was as a stimulus project. And, uh, the thought was it would provide revenue to the city of St. Albert from the sale of electricity to the grid. It was thought of, thought to be a way for the city of St. Albert to participate in Alberta's transition from coal to renewable energy. It was, uh, thought of as a way to make use of a brownfield site as well, but had apparently limited development potential. It was, it was known that power generation is a competitive, capital intensive industry in Alberta. But it was assumed that the cities, that the sites close proximity to an electrical substation, provincial and federal grants, and the city's access to low cost financing would be able to make a strong business case for the project. The concept started off as a utility scale solar farm occupying the northernmost one-third of the Badger lands. But, uh, as, as they were going through their due diligence, um, or as we were going through the due diligence, it was found that while solar farms are scalable, I mean, doubling the size of the solar farm roughly doubles the cost. There are, there are advantages to building larger facilities. The application and connection fees are typically the same regardless of the size. The regulatory approval costs, which can be significant, are also the same regardless of the size. And the mobilization costs are, are the same regardless of the size. So for these reasons, the concept for the St. Albert solar farm was increased to occupy almost the full site of the Badger lens. And also for these reasons, while phasing was considered, it was also found to be not economical. It's, it's better to build it all at once than to try and build it in three phases staggered out over five or 10 years. Through the due diligence, it also became apparent that the deregulated power generation industry is difficult for municipalities to participate. The Electrical Utilities Act actually prohibits municipalities from owning generation facilities unless, unless strict criteria are met. The EUA requires that municipally owned generating units, including those owned by a corporation controlled by the municipality, must be structured in a manner that prevents any tax advantage subsidy or financial advantage or any other indirect benefit as a result of association with the municipality or subsidiary. There's also a payment in lieu of tax regulation and that requires payments to the ASO for municipally owned generation facilities. That's equivalent to the municipal, federal, provincial income tax exemptions that municipalities enjoy in order to comply with section ninety-five of the EUA. So we've interpreted all these requirements as follows. Uh, we'd have to make this payment to the ASO in lieu of federal and provincial taxes. It's, it's also known as a balancing pool payment. The facility must make an equivalent payment to the city of St. Albert in lieu of municipal taxes. The facility must make a payment to the city of St. Albert for the lease of the land. The facility must not have access to preferential municipal financing. The city of St. Albert must be able to demonstrate that it is not subsidizing a commercial solar farm through municipal operations. And then the latest one is, uh, this was actually a new one to us, is that federal and provincial grants that are only available to municipalities are also considered by the province to be a municipal subsidy. And we found this out because several municipally owned solar farms in Alberta were recently assessed by the MSA, the Market Surveillance Administrator. And they, and they received a notice and that was issued on May thirteenth of just this year. Um, they use their, their, their Alberta municipal solar program grants to construct small commercial solar installations. And the MSA found that several of these facilities were not compliant with either the EUA or the MOUG regulation. According to the MSA, municipally owned generation facilities that are constructed using federal and provincial grants that are only available to municipalities are considered to have received a municipal subsidy. But because the facilities were small, less than five megawatts, the MSA chose to issue for a forbearance. It's like an exception rather than to issue penalties in these circumstances. Provided we meet the same criteria, it's expected the MSA would likely consider the St. Albert's commercial solar farm as a not, as non-compliant unless we also obtain a forbearance. Um, and to, to obtain a forbearance, they, they list the criteria. So you have to apply for it. Uh, it must be located within the boundaries of your municipality. It must be smaller than five megawatts and the generating municipality must not exercise offer control over the AMSP units. So as a result of the legislation, we've made the following adjustments to the commercial solar farm. So we expect that a municipal utility corporation would satisfy the requirements of EUA section ninety to demonstrate that non-subsidization. We expect that the requirement of a lease payment being COSA and the COSA MUC would provide separate revenue for the city for municipal taxes and the lease payment based on the agricultural land value. And, uh, that would eliminate any advantage in financing and eliminate any municipal advantage that a municipally owned commercial solar farm might have. We also cannot use grants that are not available to the private industry in this, in, in the case of a commercial solar farm. We'd also, I think back in February, we had discussed with council, looking at the municipal own use generation solar farm. So this is before this, we, we became aware that, uh, that federal and provincial grants, um, would be considered or are considered municipal subsidies by the MSA. We were actually looking at the possibility of a smaller scale solar farm as well at the Badger lands. The municipally owned, the municipal own use generation regulation, it provides an exemption for situations where municipalities do not need to meet the requirements of the Electric Utilities Act. So that these facilities are exempt from making that equivalent payment to the, uh, to the ASO in lieu of federal and provincial taxes. Uh, we, we'd also, the facility is also exempt from needing to make municipal tax payments. Uh, we wouldn't need to charge the facility for a lease of the land. We, we could access preferential municipal financing and we don't need to demonstrate that we're not subsidizing it either. Uh, an MUC would not be required and we can obtain grants that are specific to municipalities. But what we do have to, to do in order to qualify for MOUG is we have to demonstrate that we're consuming the electricity. All of the electricity being produced is also being consumed at municipal facilities. The third concept that we looked at was for a hybrid solar farm. So that was a two thirds commercial and a one third municipal own use generation. And that's what, uh, what we've taken forward with the design. This is, this is the design that Atco has brought forward to us. So there's a total of six arrays here to our south of Future Fowler Way and four to the north of Future Fowler Way. Uh, the north portion is twelve point six megawatts DC with an AC rating of, of ten megawatts. And the south portion, which would be municipal own use generation, has a DC rating of six point two megawatts and an AC rating of four point nine five. So combined at seventeen point eight megawatts DC and fourteen point nine five megawatts AC. And that's approximately six times the size of the service place installation. And the expected production is more than twenty-seven times that of service place. And that's because of the optimized tilt angle that we have with it, with a solar farm as well as we're, we're planning to use bi-shape, bifacial panels as part of the design. So Atco has taken the solar design to ninety percent for the electrical and heavy civil. The current design could be used to obtain the remaining approvals. There's, there is some remaining design work and it's not just ten percent. There's, there's some additional, um, items such as, uh, the foundation design that still needs to be completed and that can be done in advance of procurement or it could be assigned to a design builder and, and as, as a DB procurement. Uh, the estimated capital costs, however, have increased from twenty-two and a half million to thirty-two point four million, which that, that does not, does not include the application fees, the interconnection fees as well as the contingency budget. So. So as I said, that's, that's, that's a big increase in the capital cost. That's a forty-seven percent increase. What we've been seeing in the industry is, uh, is that the cost of cables has increased significantly. The cost of inverters has also increased significantly. And the cost of the racking has increased. For instance, the price of steel has nearly doubled since just last year. Uh, we, we've also increased the cost to evenly grade the site and to ensure proper drainage. Uh, but the solar farm has also gotten bigger. So it's not, that does not just a strictly, um, in, it's not just a strict increase based on inflation. Uh, the other factor is the fact that, um, the solar farm itself has gotten bigger. The panels have increased from five hundred and thirty watt to five hundred and forty watt. More panels have been added to the site. We've gone from twenty-eight thousand panels to just, just under thirty-five thousand. So our total DC rating has actually increased from fifteen point one megawatts to eighteen point one megawatts. And the specific production has increased from thirteen fifty-two kilowatt hours per kilowatt P to fourteen forty kilowatt hours per kilowatt P. And that's, that's just as a result of some better data that, that Atco was able to obtain from, uh, from other facilities that are using these bifacial panels. So we're projecting higher, higher production as well. And with all of these changes together, the projected output of the solar farm has increased by about thirty-five percent. Unfortunately, um, what we've been seeing is the long-term PPA pricing, the power purchase agreement pricing for solar electricity has not really increased since last year. While we've seen increases in the spot power prices, um, in the latest quarterly report, the MSA indicated that solar electricity is getting about twelve point five cents per kilowatt hour. And that was for Q two of twenty twenty-two and that's about a five percent premium over the average pool price. However, as more large scale solar production is added to the system as well as rooftop solar, reducing the demand during these same periods. Boost is predicting that the premium that solar electricity has historically received and is currently receiving will be eliminated in the future. And solar electricity in the future will be discounted compared to the average pool price. So we'll be getting a lower price than what the average pool price is. And that's getting built into those, those long-term PPA prices. So. Due to the extended payback period now, uh, Boost has proposed a thirty-year PPA rather than what they had previously recommended was a twelve-year PPA. And PPAs typically provide lower pricing than the power pool with a lower risk. But previously we were looking at higher pricing towards the backend because in those initial twelve years, we would be just about paying off the debenture. Now we're looking at close to thirty years before we're able to pay off the debenture due to the higher capital costs and, uh, all the higher costs overall. So. And we, the, although the loss of the grants is another big one because we now know that municipal own use grants are no longer available for the project in order to comply with the EUA. Uh, the project does need to make lease payments to the city to comply with the, with the EUA. But, uh, that's still revenue to the city. It's just, we need to make that as a separate payment. So it's revenue to the city. It's just not revenue to the project. Um, so it's a cost to the project. Municipalities no longer have access to the Alberta Capital Finance Authority, which has increased our financing costs by about one percent. Ideally, the project should stay cash positive with the revenue exceeding the, the debt payments as much as possible. And we're needing now to look at thirty-year financing rather than fifteen-year financing for the project. And interest rates in general are higher than last year. So. So whereas previously we were looking at about six and a half million dollars in interest charges over the, the life of the project. That's twenty-six point one million financed at three percent over fifteen years. Now we're looking at thirty-six point one million in interest charges. So that's thirty-five point six million financed at four point seven percent over thirty years. So our financing costs are more than four times what they were previously. Due to all the reasons that I just talked about on the previous page. So. So when you look at the cumulative cash flow, this is provided, was provided to us by Boost. The blue line is actually the, the project itself. So in the initial years, we would make a little bit of money. And then there's the cost to, to replace the inverters at about, uh, the year twenty thirty-seven or twenty thirty-eight. We have to replace the inverters and then, um, and then our, our production is also going to be declining. So with the declining production and declining revenue, we expect that the project would, uh, would break even from the municipal's perspective with those tax payments as well as the lease payments. But when you look at it from the project itself, uh, we expect that we would lose three million dollars over the life of the project in accumulative free cash flow. The black line would be if we did not need to borrow. So, so that's if we were financing this with cash, uh, as an unlevered, uh, development. So. So looking again at municipal own use generation, so our analysis there, um, so we would need to have interval meters. What, what we've learned is we need to have interval meters at all of the sites in order to demonstrate compliance with MOUG. We already have five sites that have interval meters. So on an hourly basis, we were able to read what the, what the meter readings are. And we did an analysis based on the twenty eighteen consumption at these, these five sites. We also looked at adding interval meters to an additional eight sites. So these, these are the sites with the next highest consumption, um, that we have. So in total, these thirteen sites actually have seventeen point four, um, sorry, seventeen million, four hundred and nine thousand kilowatt hours of, of usage. That's about eighty percent of our total consumption. So I mentioned we had two hundred and forty-nine plus sites. These thirteen sites represent eighty percent of the electricity that's consumed in the city, uh, at, at our municipal facilities. So we look back at twenty eighteen, what our consumption looked like using the five interval meter data from the five interval meters that we had. And then we extrapolated that to the additional eight sites. So looking at the, this is, this is what our consumption looks like at these sites throughout the year. So you can see between one megawatt hour and between two and a half megawatt hours. Our, our consumption is pretty flat throughout the year. So this is obviously probably the difference between daytime and nighttime, but we don't drop down to zero very often. You can see these little blips here. These are likely things that these are likely power outages we, we expect. So there's likely a small power outage here and a larger power outage back, back in twenty eighteen. Um, and we, and we chose twenty eighteen, uh, we, we had a few years of data. We chose twenty eighteen because that was pre Jackcraft solar and was also pre-service place solar. And it was also pre-COVID. We, we were seeing some, some obviously discrepancies through COVID at our facilities, some reductions in the electricity usage at the municipal facilities. So we thought we had better data going back, uh, historically to twenty eighteen. So. We then compared that data from the consumption with, uh, with what, uh, what the, the production would be from a four point nine megawatt AC municipal own use generation solar farm. So. And, and we found that the, the production in the summertime greatly exceeds what our, what our consumption is because, because we're pretty flat throughout the year. We don't have significantly increased consumption through, through the summer. Basically, we'd be non-compliant with the municipal own use generation regulation about seventeen percent of the time. And as you can see, we'd be significantly non-compliant. We would be producing about double the amount of electricity at some hours of, of the year, um, than what we'd be consuming. So. We did a similar analysis, looking at a two megawatt AC solar farm. And, uh, here we were only non-compliant about, about one percent of the time. And, uh, some of that was those power outage, so it was power outages. We went back to the, the MSA and, and, and just, you know, just discussed, uh, whether that was the issue. They said in extenuating circumstances such as power outages, they don't expect, uh, compliance with the MOUG regulation. So they take that into consideration. And in addition to this, we would also have our additional twenty percent hourly usage at our other sites just because we don't have interval meters, uh, we can use those to, to demonstrate compliance. So we, we think this would be about the size of municipal own use generation solar farm that we would need to be in, in order to be compliant with, at the MOUG regulation. But like I said, this was, uh, this was twenty eighteen. So this was pre, uh, the service place installation and pre the Jackcraft installation. We expect that would actually reduce by at least one megawatt. But those, those installations would actually reduce the amount of available consumption we'd have to use for a municipal own use generation, uh, solar farm facility. And, uh, if we were to go ahead with a municipal own use generation solar farm, it would actually, um, make, make the business case more difficult for additional rooftop solar installations in the city because they would have the, the possibility of putting our solar farm out of compliance with MOUG. So. Uh, so this is the economic analysis results that, uh, that Boost put together for us. So we've got our reference case, which was the commercial solar farm for fourteen point nine five megawatts. And that's with the balancing pool payment. And without, without any grant funding. So we've taken that to zero and with our, with our revised capital costs, we're now looking at a one point eight percent IRR. And then when you, when you factor in the municipal taxes that we'd be receiving in that lease payment, our IR would be four point one percent. So, and, uh, in order to be, in order for an investment to be considered a good investment, typically your IR has to exceed your cost of capital, your cost of borrowing. And in this case, it does not. And actually none of the cases does our, does our IR exceed what our costs of capital are. So, so none of these three cases that we took a hard look at would be considered a good investment, even when you consider what we'd be receiving in municipal taxes. Uh, the, the best case was actually the hybrid because the hybrid was able to take advantages of the economies of scale of the largest solar farm. The the best case was actually the hybrid because the hybrid was able to take advantage as the economy is a scale of the largest solar farm. And it was also to take advantage of the available grant funding. So. So talking about some green considerations for the project because that's obviously a consideration. The carbon intensity of solar PV is is significantly lower than natural gas, oil or coal. And this is this is coming from the EPA website, and they took an average of about fifty sources in order to obtain this. So. It is not zero, though, and that's that's one of the things that we got from from the feedback and in some of the public engagement was that solar PV isn't zero. And that that is that is correct. So it isn't it isn't net zero completely, but it is it is substantially lower and in terms of of carbon footprint or carbon intensity. Than natural gas, oil or coal. But for this project, unlike the rooftop solar installations, the solar farm concept was never intended to reduce St. Albert's carbon footprint. It was. It was initially proposed strictly as a revenue generating opportunity. And a significant component of that revenue is is from the sale of the green attributes. And so. So that's that's included within that cost analysis was we'd actually be selling the green attributes to somebody else. As either renewable energy credits or REX, which can be used by other customers. That would be willing to pay this premium in order in order to reduce their own carbon footprint. Green attributes can also be sold alternatively as carbon offsets and. Companies can use those to reduce the amount of carbon tax that they pay. So a natural gas power generation facility, for instance. Could use the carbon offsets from within Alberta. They can use the carbon offsets from from a solar farm. In order to reduce the amount of carbon tax that they that they pay due to their carbon emissions. So. The city of Edmonton recently announced the purchase of Rex to reduce their carbon footprint by thirty percent. And the city of Edmonton also has a goal for city operations to achieve a target of one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty forty. The environmental site assessment on on a similar, I guess, note when we're talking about the environmental footprint. We have the ESA report, looking at the Badger Lands and looking at those salt-impacted soils. That report did not identify a significant risk to human health, wildlife or environment based on the findings and the potential pathways. The city's risk appears to be minimal currently, provided the city restricts the uses of the site to those that are appropriate based on the results. For instance. No shallow domestic consumption water wells, et cetera. The city's risk can be further medicated by maintaining ownership of the salt-impacted portion of the site and continuing with the risk management plan. Provided the city does not sell the north. So this is not all these are the recommendations of the consultant. This is this is some of my own, I guess, reading into that that ESA. So. Provided the city does not sell the north third of the Badger Lands, the city may not need to remediate. This likely limits the uses of a portion of the property to non-residential. And it should be noted that there are no environmental concerns currently identified for the southern portion of the Badger Lands. So those south of Fowler Way, those have not been impacted. By the salt, salt-contaminated soils and and not impacted the groundwater to the south of Fowler Way has not been impacted either. The current estimates for remediation are in the order of four and a half million dollars. Mediation of the salt-impacted soil is not needed for the development of the solar farm and no costs for remediation are currently included in the project costs. However, the corrosion effects were considered in the design of the screw piles. The development of the solar farm does require leveling the site by moving fill from the higher areas to the lower elevation areas. And and providing some some grading for drainage. But effectively, when we do that, we would be burying the salt-impacted soils within the low-lying areas. We then be adding screw piles to these areas, potentially introducing new pathways for the salt to enter the groundwater. There is a risk that we could actually be increasing the remediation costs or limiting the potential uses of the site in the future if we were to proceed with the solar farm. Offsite levies are another consideration. The city's offsite levy bile actually requires several million dollars in offsite levies to be paid at the time of subdivision or development of the Badger Lands. And the city city council does have the authority to make the Badger Lands or preferably solar farms in general exempt from paying offsite levies. However, what this would do is it would actually increase the offsite levies for other developers, particularly for the infrastructure that's already been built and intended to service. The Badger Lands. There is there is some specific oversizing that was constructed for sanitary. And stormwater in order to service the Badger Lands, which is was previously a priority of 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 councils of the day. Offsite shared infrastructure that is constructed for urban development needs all benefiting lands to pay their fair share in order to maintain reasonable offsite levy rates. So the offsite levy program then in turn needs to collect the funds from these benefiting lands as they are developed in order to fund new infrastructure in order to support further growth. Another consideration is increased servicing costs for the annexation lands. And this is a fairly new one. This is what I was speaking about earlier. In the original solar farm concept, the Badger Lands were actually on the edge of the city. And they were on the outer boundary of the city at St. Albert. But when we annexed all of these additional lands. Now we need to extend services to them in order. The intent is that these are going to become urbanized lands and part of the city of St. Albert. And and developed in an urban framework. So. The only way to service the lands to the west of Badger Lands, or I guess the most reasonable way to service these lands to the west of the Badger Lands, which are a key. Property is from the Badger Lands itself. Water servicing cannot be extended to the Badger Lands with the current. Current utility master plant does not have water coming from the south to the north. Because these are lower elevation lands. As you move further south, these lower elevation lands require pressure-reducing valves. That's what these dots are. And these pressure-reducing valves allow water to come in. So water is coming from the east and it's coming from the north into these areas. But it doesn't come back. So water can't come from these these lower elevation lands to the lands west of Badger. So the only way to service these lands is through the Badger Lands. So so water needs to be extended through the Badger Lands to get to these lands. And these lands are also very key to the development of of the whole northwest area because. The sanitary sewer for the areas for the lands west of Hogan Road and east of east of Carrot Creek actually need to come through these lands. So the sanitary is coming from the south. The water needs to come from the east. Ultimately, the water is going to come from the east, far to the east. Far to the northeast, sorry, with the with the construction of a new reservoir. But in the interim. We need water to come through the Badger Land. So the development of these lands, which are key to the development of the Northwest St. Albert. In order to be reasonably serviced, serviced at a reasonably cost. And I think it's about one point two million dollars. That would be the additional servicing costs for these lands if they were. Because that developer of those lands would need to extend a water main through a solar farm in order in order to do the urban development. Typically, you want to have contiguous growth and you don't want to have that type of a situation. But if we were to develop a solar farm, which is essentially a rural-type development within an urban area. It would it would not extend those services at a lower cost to the to the land. So. Say in summary, it would increase the servicing costs of the land in the west and and to the northwest annexation area. So we haven't included site remediation costs in in those cost estimates, and we haven't included offsite levy costs. And a commercial solar farm would also require an MUC. We expect the cost for MUC would be much less than what was talked about last year. I think we had four hundred thousand dollars per year. That was for a full MUC with five lines of business. If we're just talking about a solar farm only in the city of St. Albert, the sole owner. We we expect that we can use the city council as the board, and it would cost about fifty thousand dollars to do an MUC. That would be specific to the city of St. Albert for the solar farm. We don't expect a lot of decisions after the decision to proceed. There's really not a lot of decision-making that that goes into the solar farm as long as we're maintaining ownership. We don't expect a lot of day-to-day governance issues to come up. This would be an annual report to council. As as the acting as the board for the for the St. Albert-owned MUC. So. There are additional risks. The capital cost could end up even being higher than what we've expected due to further cost escalations. The AUC public engagement could also result in further cost escalations. There's the risks of vandalism, extreme weather events and as well as maintenance issues. Like we've seen with some of our rooftop solar, those some of those issues can also reduce the production at the facility in addition to having some unexpected costs. Fowler Way is expected to be elevated in the future with a potential in potential interchange at the Ray Given Drive intersection. Particularly, this would particularly affect the west end of the site and may require relocation of a portion of the solar farm when that is in fact constructed. It could also reduce the solar farm production from a portion of the solar farm due to the shade from from an elevated Fowler Way. There's also the risk of legislative changes. And when one example was was a decision by the AUC. Regarding DCG credits and that DCG de-credits were distribution-connected generation credits. It was effectively. Fortis and 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 NMAX and and a few other of the distributing. The distributing companies, the distributors were collecting money and they were they were providing money to distributed connected generation directly. Because they were reducing the transit, because those facilities in in are reducing the transmission costs to to customers. So they they were instead collecting distribution, the DCG credits, and they were providing that to those type of generators. And that actually would have would have provided an additional thirty million dollars of revenue to this project. So. So when that was the decision was made in June of twenty twenty-seven, it effectively removed thirty million dollars from the business case for a commercial solar farm. Oh, sorry, I'm just getting some feedback. Getting some feedback there. There is a risk that is existing and existing proposed solar farms and rooftop solar installations. There could be too much solar in Alberta. This is part of the reason that long-term PPA pricing for electricity-producing solar farms has not been increasing. And this is just again, this looking at that economic analysis against this again. Other solar farm options that we could consider. We could consider a solar, a small, a commercial solar farm in conjunction with remediation of the salt-impacted soils. We should be able to get grant funding for the remediation. This would allow the remainder of the site to be developed as. Higher-value urban lands. However, the IRR would be considerably lower for this option than for option one, and there would still be issues with offsite levy and higher utility servicing costs for the neighboring lands. We could consider the commercial solar farm with a reduced size, say, take it down to the four point nine megawatts AC. Specifically on the northern portion of the site, along with remediation. This would allow the remainder of the site to be be developed as higher-value urban lands. However, the IRR would be expected to be considerably lower for this option than for option two, because now we'd be carrying the cost of remediation along with the project. We could also consider an MUG solar farm with battery storage. We haven't fully explored battery storage. So the electricity produced would be able to match the consumption at St. Albert's facilities. However, you know, from a back-of-envelope analysis, this would be expected to increase the capital cost, we think by at least fifty percent for the project. And the life expectancy for these large-scale batteries is approximately only ten years right now. So. It's expected that the city of St. Albert would be able to procure green electricity through procurement of long-term contracts for electricity and the purchase of Rex. At a lower cost than what a small MOUG solar farm with battery storage would be able to provide. So it's expected that no solar farm, so it's expected that none of the solar farm options would provide a financial advantage over urban development of the land. Even if remediation of the salt-impacted soils is required in order to develop. And it's expected that no solar farm option would actually provide a financial advantage over maintaining or over simply maintaining ownership of the Badger Lands. Without remediation of the salt-impacted soil. So what I'm talking about here is the current public operations and engineering uses of the site. So what administration is proposing is sort of a clean slate for the site, other than Fowler Way, and we have to consider the existing salt-impacted soils. And administration will need time to gather input from the multiple departments before a recommendation regarding the disposition. Or preferred alternate uses of the Badger Lands can be made. The relocation of the existing public operations and engineering activities at the Badger Lands would need to be considered as well as the timing for such relocation. And one of the challenges with determining the future uses is that the Badger Lands are actually within two separate area structure plans. So it's recommended that the proposed future uses for the Badger Lands align with both the North, the North Ridge Area Structure Plan. And the ongoing St. Albert West Area Structure Plan. So that that concludes the presentation, and I guess I'll open it up to some questions.
Thank you, Regan. I'll just start with, that was fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. What we would expect from you and and all the staff at the city done your due diligence on this and. For anyone watching at home, I think it really makes a lot of sense where the conclusions came from. So I really appreciate the clarity. And the work that you put into this. Now you said we've got. I've got, we've got pivotal research here. We've got Atco and we have Boost. So are they just here to answer questions?
That is correct.
Okay, so just so you know, counsel, you can ask questions of Regan or any one of the consultants from Pivotal, Atco or Boost. So I'm going to open it up now. Go ahead, Mike. Sorry, Counsel Kilik.
Mike is fine. Regan, thanks very much for all of the. The work in detail scenarios that you worked through. You know, there's a lot on your plate and you certainly provided a lot of a lot of good information, a lot of clarity and I. I think counsel and and our residents should should say a big thank you to you. It. It couldn't have been easy to sift through all of this information and come up with. The the recommendation that we not proceed because I think there was a lot of pressure that this was going to be a. A silver bullet, if not a golden bullet, to help us generate revenue and potentially lower taxes. So thank you for. You know, the due diligence and and getting us to to this point today. Just a couple of questions in in terms of the MSA. Giving, I think it was forbearance on some of these small solar farms that are overproducing on an hourly basis. And and that goes against the the rules, basically. Now that we know that is a a case. Would it be likely that we would? Be approved to to also get forbearance on that? It's kind of like the guys that did it first kind of made a mistake and they get. Forbearance and forgiveness, but now you know you can't go into it. Even if you wanted to and and would would that be risky for us to even think of taking that approach?
So through the through the charity counselor, Kilik, I I I think we could assume that they would treat us in a similar manner. But that that forbearance notice was specific to the AMSP funding. So so it would be if there were perhaps say another round of AMSP funding. But we are not, we would not, the commercial solar farm as as it was proposed, would not be able to be compliant with that forbearance because of the size, right? So we're over three, we're about three times the size of of that five megawatts. So. Which which was the limit for the forbearance notice. So.
Okay, the the other question I noticed in some of the spreadsheets. We went through them pretty quickly, but it showed like thirty-five-year PPAs and thirty-five-year. Payback numbers, and yet most PPAs, I think, are in the range of ten to fifteen years and. The I I guess the other piece of that is that. The panels are only guaranteed by the manufacturer for either twenty to twenty-five years and it would almost seem. Unrealistic that we would expect a PPA. Purchase agreement with anybody to extend thirty or thirty-five years for that reason alone. And could we even guarantee power? When when the guarantee on the or warranty on the panels is typically only twenty-five. So it kind of. We really kind of stretched the boundaries of trying to make this thing pay and and yet it goes even beyond. What normal business practices is is that correct or?
I I I think that's I I I would agree with you, Counsel Kilik. It's a. Part of part of the reason for the thirty-year PPA that as as it was proposed is until we have that debenture paid off. There's there's a risk, right? So in the in the initial analysis or the sorry, the previous analysis that was presented last year, we're looking at a twelve-year PPA, which is which is more typical. But and then and then we were looking at at actually getting higher electricity pricing for the remaining years, right? But there's a risk there. Here, we can't afford to take that risk because we've got debenture payments to make every year. So we need to have. Stability in the pricing. So so that was the thought by Boost of a thirty-year PPA to to match. To match with the debenture borrowing would be. So. And and you're correct that that you're correct, that's not typical, but thirty-five years is 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 about the expected life of the solar panels. And I I do think that that's a reasonable expected life. It's possible we could get forty years. But we have seen warranties for about twenty-five years. And that's how the panels themselves, we 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 know the inverters. We we do not expect the inverters would last thirty-five years.
Yeah, inverters are like ten years or something, I think. But.
Yeah, yeah, ten to twenty years.
Again, I would just say this was seen as such a, you know, potentially great opportunity and. But giving giving you the time to do the due diligence has, I guess, got us to the right place and.
Let's let's save that for debate.
I appreciate.
Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Regan, just before I start, that was probably the best presentation I've seen in nine years. So thank you. It was extremely well done, as Mayor Heron said. So if we you you said if we don't remediate that land, what could we still use it for? Obviously, residential is out. But if we didn't remediate the land, is it pretty much anything but residential? But if we didn't remediate the land, is it pretty much anything but residential?
So, so maybe I'll just jump in on that and maybe our, I think our environment group is like the on the call as well. But to start off with, we, we had some, some actually very similar contamination. We had some salt impacted soils at the Jack Craft site. And we chose not to remediate until we actually built on, on, on the, on the exact site of of the salt, salt impacted soils. So there was this, so that was the trigger, right? So and when we did that development at that, at that time, we chose to to remove as much of the salt impacted soil as we could, but we weren't able to remove all of it. So the remainder that was left in the ground, we, we've just been, you know, doing a long term monitoring program on it. So.
So we could basically, we could build anything but residential potentially on there, especially it's certainly if we remove all the dirt, we, anything's.
Well, the, the only reason that I discount residential is because residential is not land that the city owns. I, I would actually recommend that we maintain ownership of of the land unless we're planning to remediate. If if we're remediating the land, that actually could open, could open it up to residential. So without remediation, I, I would say we would want to hold on to the land. So.
The other question was the fifty thousand for the MEC. So that's, I'm trying to figure out how that comes to play because I understand the governance would be this way, but there's still cost to maintaining this or just like cleaning all of the, all the panels, there's accounting, there's other things that are involved. So does that include it in the fifty thousand or is that? Because I really sure not doing an MEC business case right now. So I'm not asking you to go through great details. I'm just trying to figure out the fifteen and what we're missing here.
Through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, that, that is over and above the operations and maintenance costs. So I think there was about a hundred thousand a year in, in, in O and M costs. This is the governance costs that are over and above that. So so that, that does not include, and I think we had some administration costs in addition to the, the O and M costs that were included in in Boost model.
Okay, so that wasn't including the actual, the stuff to do, the MEC that was above it. The other question I had, the thirteen plus million that you recommended, if it was to proceed, would be another thirteen million dollars in borrowing. But that didn't include the offsite levies. And I think that last year, the offsite levy was discussed was nine point eight million. So I'm just wondering why we were not recommending to include the borrowing cost of the offsite levies. Like we, the recommendation is thirteen point three, but really it should be twenty three point three more million if we're going to include the offsite levy costs.
St. Albert City Council has the option of making these lands exempt from offsite levies or making solar farms in general exempt from offsite levies. There are certain lands that are exempted from paying offsite levies. One of them is, is a municipal reserve land does not pay offsite levies. Stormwater management facilities also do not pay offsite levies. So we, we have the ability to to say, you know what? Solar farms don't, don't pay offsite levies. But there, there, there's some considerations, there, there's, there would, there would be an impact to the offsite levies program overall. Because that, that, that program has assumed that these lands would be developed as urban lands and they would contribute towards that offsite infrastructure that's, that's benefiting. Actually, these specific lands, infrastructure has already been constructed to benefit these lands. Those costs would then be transferred to other developers and their offsite levies would go up. So and I think it was, it was closer to eight million dollars is, is what we had, we'd calculated. And 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 it would be even less if we were to say designate some of it as MR and designate some of it as a stormwater management facility. So that would reduce that. That was just, but the way the, the current offsite levy bylaw is written, solar farms are not exempt from offsite levies. So.
Okay, so unless we were to actually exclude it, we're looking at around and give ourselves a pass, so to speak. We, there are eight million. So really, if we were to say we're going to allow the offset levy program to continue as is and us pay contribute into it, we really need to increase that borrowing by twenty million. Probably twenty one.
That is correct.
If we chose to do it that way. Okay, great. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly want to add my voice to the chorus, saying that this was a fine report, well done. And you know, when we ask our administration to look at options for for creating revenue to our city, every time we do that, we need to do the deep due diligence to ensure that it meets the needs of our community. And this certainly met the, the criteria for a due diligence report, and I appreciate that. My question is around timing now. So we've got the North Ridge ASP, we're working on the St. Albert West ASP. How long before we could really consider the harmonization between those two ASPs and what it would mean for the Badger Lands? Do you have any timeline on that?
So I, I, I had projected, sorry, through the Chair to, through the Chair to Counselor Broadhead, I had projected by Q two next year. Because it's, it's going to take cooperation from a number of different departments in order to, to work through that. So I, I was thinking by Q two next year, we, we could, we could have a plan in place. So.
All right, fair enough.
And I'd actually, I think, I think I had a report back to council by Q four. I, I think within the recommendations, I built in a report back to council by Q four. So.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll save the rest of my comments for debate.
Thank you. Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. I missed one question, came down brain afterwards. And I'm happy to bring forward these motions if you want me to.
I've already got two people who want to do.
All right, well, it's fine. So the, the motion number three, I'm not sure if it's to you or to, I will look down here, but the motion number three about be directed to take no action in respect to any other council motion or portion of a council motion that references a specific feature use of the Badger Lands, except the motion give third reading to statutory plan that's still in effect. I don't know what that means. I don't know what the consequences of that action are. I know that we had a motion a Coons age ago about a portion of the land being designated for high school. I'm not sure if there's anything else or is there, what else is this referencing? Is it just the high school lands?
Thank you, Counsel. There are actually a number of motions directing that. What, what we're proposing with, with option three is to essentially reset the bar at zero. Let us do the analysis, come back to you with options that you would then start make, make the decision on as opposed, it just allows us to clear the slate and start looking at this with an unbiased eye.
Okay. Is it possible? It's possible. What I'd love to see is just what the motions are that we're resetting. I understand the high school is one of them and but even if this is after the fact, just so that when this is brought forward in Q four, at least we knew what was being taken off, what we took off the tables. That way, at least we can have that discussion about it because I'm still hesitant to take off that, the high school completely off of those lands. It's, it's, it's hard finding ten acres of land available for high schools. And so that's my hesitancy. So I'd love to just actually know what other motions were taking off the table right now with that. That's my challenge.
I'm just trying to figure, wasn't this in the agenda package?
Was it specifically, I'm sorry. You can tell me with Paige and I'll look down because I've been reading this little guy.
And I don't remember a high school being in there.
I remember the Council McKay had a, McKay had a motion for the high school. And that's why and that passed that we allocate ten acres or ten percent, one of the others, can't remember, towards a high school. So but we, am I missing it in here? And I just, or we just don't have.
It was one of the attachments.
Was it? Okay, well, then I will go look for.
Attachments of the AR.
All right, I missed it somehow. Okay.
But I'll, I'll just jump in. That actually only went back to two thousand and twelve. And and the reason is because our, the database on the previous motions is only searchable back to two thousand and twelve. So it would require a more exhaustive search to go, to go previous to, to two thousand and twelve. So.
Okay. All right, I'm going to dig this little puppy up. So at least I know what it is and thank you for that.
All right, I have.
Mayor Heron, if I may just interject, there's some, another important thing here. Regan has pointed out that the database, like the actual searchable database, only goes so far back. It would take a more intensive search to be sure we had all the motions. So that was one factor in the, the reason why the motion was worded the way it is. But the other one is, and this goes to Counsel Hughes' point, we did not want to recommend to council today to actually rescind any previous motions. That will come when, when, when the recommendation eventually comes through as to what administration recommends should be done with the Badger Lands. Then it will be a lot more clear which previous motions need to be actually rescinded. We're not quite at that point today. So I think you just want to point out the reason why the wording is to take no action as opposed to rescind is because we're not, it's premature. We don't really know for sure which previous motions need to be rescinded. Partly because we're not sure we found them. We've found all the ones we know back to two thousand and twelve, but there've got to be some before that. So if that helps.
Okay, that all makes sense. Thank you very much for that.
All right, I had a, because Counsel Jolly's not in chambers, she can't put her request to make a motion. So she's sent me a message that she is willing to do it and Counsel McKay wants to do it. So does it matter? Counsel Jolly, do you want to? I don't know which one of you came first.
Yeah, for sure. I'd like to. That's, that works.
Yep.
Okay, that the portion of council motion AR twenty one, two eighty passed on June twenty one, twenty twenty one, that grants council approval for project charter ENV zero zero four for twenty six point one million be rescinded. That the motion passed by council on June twenty one, twenty twenty one, to give first reading to bylaw thirty five, twenty twenty one, being a borrowing bylaw to design and construct a solar farm be rescinded. That administration be directed to take no action in respect to any other council motion or portion of a council motion that references a specific future use for the Badger Lands, accepting a motion to give third reading to a statutory plan bylaw that is still in effect. That the first one hundred and thirty five thousand of any unspent funds from the budget for project ENV zero zero four be uncommitted within the capital reserve and any unspent funds in excess of the amount be uncommitted within the stabilization reserve. That administration review the potential uses for the South Badger Lands, being that portion of the Badger Lands, forty three city annex lying south of future Fowler Way and provide a recommendation by Q four, twenty twenty three, for future disposition or use of the South Badger Lands that is consistent with the North Ridge Area Structure Plan. And that administration review the potential uses for the North Badger Lands, being that portion of the Badger Lands, forty three city annex lying north of future Fowler Way and provide a recommendation by Q four, twenty twenty three, for future disposition or use of the North Badger Lands that is consistent with the St. Albert West Area Structure Plan, when a bylaw adopting that statutory plan is passed.
Well, done. All right, I'll accept all of those unless anyone wants to split them, but I'm seeing no requests. So go ahead, Counsel Jolly.
I'll reserve my comments for closing. No.
Okay, I'll just point out that number two in here is to rescind, rescind first reading of the boring bylaw, which is the exact same motion when we get to eight point one. So we'll just skip over eight point one of this passes. So. Okay, so are you going to wait to the, to close?
Yep.
All right.
I just have brief comments.
Anyone else have comments? Counsel Broadhead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, it's, it'll be interesting how this plays out in the community, but I want to encourage administration not to stop looking for new and innovative ways to bring revenue into our community. The fact that this one played out the way it does I just indicates the due diligence administration is doing to make sure that those activities that we want to participate in actually pay dividends to the community. And I appreciate the due diligence in that respect. Just, I want to encourage you to continue to look because if we don't try to be innovative, then we are by default left with the, the legacy ways of, of funding our community, which is fees and taxes. And we need to find new ways of doing that. And oftentimes, we need to take a look at new and innovative ways. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we do it right. So thank you to administration and certainly support the motions.
Awesome. Counsel Hughes.
Uh, thank you. I just really want to, I, I didn't really kind of briefed over Regan how important this report was. And when it came forward in February and it was said, well, we'll give you a analysis. And I remember I looked right at you and you're going to tell me the truth, right? And you did, like, this is just absolutely blown me out of the water. Because politically, it would have been easier just to try to pretend it would have been better than to acknowledge that it would not make us money at all and in fact lose it. Which has been my concern from the get go for the past year. Many of the issues that were brought forward are new. And many of them, however, are not new. And the concerns that many people had in the community even twelve months ago were valid. And my concern was not that we looked for any revenue opportunities. I think that's a great idea. My concern was that we approved a project for it to move forward. We brought forward a boring bylaw. We had second and third reading put forward for the board and bylaw. It was refused to be rescinded for boring bylaw for twenty, thirty three million dollars. And we now upon looking at this, it's clear that they wouldn't have made us any money. And that's a very large concern for me. So I'm hoping that on all future relevant programs, that we actually do all the due diligence and really look at it very critically, as it was done with this report. Before we start approving projects and having to rescind things, before we start doing boring bylaws and having to rescind them. And we can say this is just the order of events, but this is not the same as trying to build a capital project. We're looking at a fact of an order of events that we are doing revenue. And the boring bylaw was brought forward for second and third reading. This wasn't just casually brought out. And then from public outcry, I feel that it was delayed. There were assumptions about power pricing that would increase in the previous models. I think that these were much more stable of what you're predicting. And also the fact that the recognizing that the power pricing for solar is not increasing like it would otherwise. Unfortunately, this council was not educated about how power pricing works. However, the more solar you have in the system, the more the on demand pricing goes up as the solar is not reliable. So when solar doesn't work, the gap between what you need and what you have already producing increases. And because supply and demand work in a way, the more solar is not working that day, the more the demand pricing goes up. So it does not help solar, but it does help on demand pricing. For example, natural gas that can rev up the generators. And so as a result, the predictions of the pricing that came forward to council last year were just not accurate. So I'm really, really grateful. When I saw this report come in, I just, I literally was almost in tears. I was so grateful to see that it actually was not coming forward to recommend that we had to do this and we had to question assumptions and really, really look at this. What came forward was very thorough, is very, I think, very realistic. And we have to realize that if this was to move forward, that the pricing that was offset was not wrong by twenty six million, but closer to fifty when you included offsite levies. And the borrowing bylaws that were brought forward and the assumptions that were made last year were for interest rates that were several percentages less than what they are today. And they could increase even more before this project would have been actually completed. And none of those discussions were even on the table last year. So was the due diligence done this time? Yes. And I'm extremely grateful for the leadership that brought forward and had the courage to bring this forward and admit that this is not the right path to go down. Yes. But we also have to take responsibility of the fact that we were approving projects before this level of due diligence was done. And there was no necessity to approve those projects until this level of diligence was done. So I will be very relieved to vote no, to vote in favor of this and to stop this from moving forward. But I think that the order and how we are doing things and investigating alternate revenue sources needs to change. And we should not be putting the public thinking that they would have no say in a boring bylaw. Because second and third reading were passed or were delayed in August. The public didn't know what the results were going to be until it came out in Wednesday. And neither did really, did we till that week either. If the debt recommendation had been different, the public really would have had almost no warning that this was going to come down. And that also is a little disturbing. Actually, it's very disturbing. So Regan, you banged it out of the park. Mr. Hiltz and Mr. Fletcher, thank you for your leadership and saying that we should tell everybody what's actually happening and recommend to council this should not go forward. And I really do thank you for all of this work on this. It was very, very well done. Thank you.
Counsel McKay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to add my congratulations as well for the in-depth quality report and and additional analysis, additional study that went into the findings today and the recommendations today. So kudos and thank you very much. But I also want to point out that for me, the process actually worked. I actually have confidence in the, I even have more confidence today in our project management processes than I had when this all started because I'm, I was always aware that there was a number of decision gates that were available to council. And this just proves one of them today. We have phase three that required everything we heard today, every bit of analysis that went into the fantastic progress report or arrived at the recommendations was anticipated in phase three, what we agreed to August of last year. So I think this dude did diligence and adherence to sound project management principles really has brought us to the appropriate decision in front of us today. So I will be supporting it. And while I'm disappointed that an opportunity even Ernst and Young in their operational and fiscal review actually recommended that we need, as a municipality, as a city, we need to identify additional sources of revenue, because we're not going to be able to get it from the province. We're not going to be able to get it continually by going to the taxpayer. We need to find it. So I'm disappointed that this opportunity didn't work out. But I'm not disappointed in the process. I'm actually celebrating the process. This worked and we are here today making a proper decision based on the anticipated and proper analysis. So again, congratulations to Mr. Regan, to the consultants. I mean, our world has changed. You could see that. You could see the capital costs were going up. You could see that the IR was not going to be positive in our favor. So why would we proceed? We always knew that we needed revenue. This identified this was not the right avenue and like Counsel Broadhead has always soundly identified. I hope this doesn't discourage us other opportunities on behalf of administration and even on council. We need to find additional revenue. This one unfortunately didn't work out, or fortunately didn't work out because we've seen that pitfalls at each one of the different options. But I mean, every one of those options and even additional options were investigated, but nothing was there for us. Now there's an opportunity to actually look at what we can do with the Badger Lands that even opens up maybe another door that we thought was closed to us before, but now we see that even that price wasn't a barrier anymore. So congratulations. I'm obviously going to support the recommended motions and that ends my comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Kilik.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, Reagan, I, I think you're the point man. And a lot of people have said thank you to you, but I am pretty darn sure there's a big team behind you. And that whole team needs to be recognized. I'm sure no one in city administration I've learned is a one-man band. And so I congratulate you and the broad team that all worked so hard on this to bring this information together. It just goes to prove that solar business with regulatory changes coming at us even as late as a couple of weeks ago. Complexity of the business itself and cost escalations, technology changes can, can just play out in so many ways. This is an incredibly complex business to get into. And when you do the deep dive analysis, unfortunately, this just didn't didn't work out for the, for us. But I still want to focus that rooftop solar is a viable alternative. So I expect to see some other new capital projects potentially and opportunities as we go forward in the solar environment, just in a much more simpler direction. So we're not giving up on solar. We're just not going ahead with this particular proposal. And I, I am very excited in in what's next for the Badger Lands and we'll be bringing something forward in that regard in the near future. But I think that as a standalone opportunity, future business opportunity for Badger Lands may in itself be a potential way to offset costs and generate revenue. So I'm excited for that opportunity coming forward and obviously be supporting all these, these motions.
Counsel Brumansky.
Thank you through the, through the mayor, to Reagan and administration. I do want to thank you as well for the exceptional report presented. Doing your due diligence in the final hours when it's most important was duly appreciated by council, I'm sure members of the city. So I will be supporting this motion. And again, congratulations on exceptional report at this time.
All right, it's up to you to close it up, Counsel Jolly.
Thank you. So very briefly, you know, administrations change of recommendation really demonstrates their exceptional professionalism in terms of their ability to identify the tremendous change in the environment that we've seen over the last couple of years. You know, anyone who is building anything knows that, that a project approved, however long ago, would have been approved in an environment that's very different from the one that we face now. I'd also like to acknowledge that one of the benefits of completing the public engagement for this project means that we can really clearly see that priorities of residents are shifting to a desire for decreased reliance on fossil fuels, increased security from having a local energy source, reduced environmental impact, and just even the improved perception of, of St. Albert as a green community. So in the presentation, Reagan mentioned this concept was never intended to reduce our carbon, carbon footprint, but, but I would argue that it should have. So, so as Counsel Broadhead mentioned, Admin's commitment to innovation is applauded and I'm excited to see it continue. Thank you to, to administration, to all residents for their participation in exploring this opportunity. And you know, for me, the, the knowledge that we gained through this process is really going to help us make great decisions in the future. So thank you. That's all I have.
All right, call for the vote. Oh, sorry, vote is closed and that passes unanimously. Okay, which means we can skip over eight point one because it was already voted on in the previous and then eight point two. Does anybody need a break? No, we're good. Looking down here. Sean, do you need a break? Let's do eight point two then. Okay, so amendment to the water bylaw for second and third reading and we have Tara here.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I am Tara Schmier, the Financial Operations Controller for Revenue Services and Utilities. So as per council's request, administration has reviewed the metrics and data associated with the non-standard water meter program. The review included looking at the current non-standard meter reading program fees established in the water bylaw and the cost the city incurs to execute this program. As a result, we are bringing forward amendments to the water bylaw specifically to the fees associated with the program. The proposed fees would more closely align this program's revenue and expenses as the intent is to achieve cost recovery. So thank you, and I will address any questions that you have.
Oh, that was quick. I'll start real quick. I'm just wondering how many people we have registered on this program right now?
We have thirty-one accounts registered.
Thirty-one? Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Counsel Brumansky, go ahead.
Through the mayor to administration, I had one question. It was mentioned in the report that it may encourage others to take advantage of this. Was that considered a positive or a negative?
Uh, that is a good question. Um, I guess from the perspective, I guess it depends which perspective we're looking from. If it's from a customer satisfaction perspective, then that customer has the option to join the program. However, if it's from a financial perspective, then more so more so on a negative side, because there are costs that are incurred on a monthly basis to be able to execute this program. So the more accounts that we have registered within the program, the higher that cost increases.
Okay, and there was, it said cost to remove the, the meter. Is that projected or not?
The cost to remove the meter was originally established at fifty dollars per removal. However, we are recommending that that fee be changed to the, to note the replacement cost. And the reason for that is because the replacement cost may vary depending on how the type of meter within the home and the work required to be done to remove and install a new meter. So that can range anywhere, I believe, from about ninety to a hundred and fifty dollars. So it instead of quoting just the fifty dollars, we're recommending that we change that to the replacement cost.
Okay, and would the replacement be the same meter that was there prior?
The, the new meter installed, um, so sorry, let me clarify that the meter itself would remain as is, but we would be changing out what I believe is called the touchpad, which is the R nine hundred, which is on the outside of the home, which is what sends the transmission to the towers. And I'm not sure, maybe Reagan wants to comment on the technicalities of that.
I, I think it's actually inside the home, but yes, everything else is correct, I believe.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
All right, Counsel Kilik and then Counsel Jolly.
Thank you, Tara. The, what's the actual real dollar? How when we take, I was curious about thirty-one customers and we're going to save X number of dollars, like this is a ten thousand dollar change to bring it into a revenue neutral scenario?
Right, so currently the fees that we have established in the water bylaw generate about fifty-seven hundred dollars in revenue annually. The new proposed rates will bring that revenue to about forty-two hundred dollars annually. So the difference there is only about fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Jolly.
Thank you. I'm just curious while we're moving to zero dollars for the unsuccessful reading in the bill correction due to an unsuccessful or incorrect submission.
It shouldn't, did you say zero dollars? It shouldn't say zero dollars.
No, okay, maybe I misread that.
No, that's okay. The unsuccessful read, we are proposing to change to, oh, sorry, unsuccessful attempt. Okay, sorry, you said zero dollars, but we're actually recommending to remove that fee. It's just not applicable based on the way that we execute these fees.
Sorry, I don't understand. Do we never get to a point where someone shows up at the house and they can't do a reading?
That does happen, but in the event that a reading is not obtained, that would default to the billing estimate fee, which is point number seventeen, which would result in a ten dollar per estimate charge. So that's the fee that would be applied to the account instead of the unsuccessful attempt fee.
Okay, and the bill correction's not required because that's just that standard twice a year check and we'll fix it at that time? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. So in April and October, we will send out Neptune, the city's contractor to perform the reads and that would be a true up of the actual reads at that point in time. So twice per year.
Okay, and do we have like, do we have like a stockpile of standard meters if people want these installed in their house? Or if they need replacing, that kind of thing? Like, are we going to hit a point where those just don't exist anymore in, in terms of replacements?
Um, I don't think we have a stockpile per se, but if they needed a meter to be repaired, we would place a service call for that and either the city Public Works Utilities will go in and upgrade or change out the meter, or we would have Neptune, the contractor to do so.
And I'll just jump in. That's, that's primarily the method is, is, is we contracted out to Neptune and, and they do maintain a small stockpile.
They do. Okay, so we're, we're not at risk of that just disappearing quite yet. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Counsel Kilik, did I go to you already? And you have no further? Okay. Anyone else have questions? We've got Counsel Hughes ready to make the motion. Go ahead.
Yep, let's do it. That bylaw thirty slash twenty twenty-two, a bylaw to amend water bylaw five slash twenty oh one be read a first time. All right, go ahead. You know, I, I was really anxious and I, when this report came out, I didn't know what the fees were going to be and because initially the recommendations were much higher and I was really happy to see that the, the rates were actually net a little bit lower, but certainly even though it's twenty-five dollars for the non-standard meter readings still within the realm of reasonableness, especially when the estimates went down. So I just, I really appreciated the fact that this recommendation was really to try to find a way to make things work and not to penalize people who have issues with the other meter readings. And I understand that many people don't and the majority people don't have an issue with the new meters, but those who do have those issues, the RFF, I just accommodating them and allowing them to still be able to feel comfortable living in the city. Many of them have health issues if they're too close to these things. And just, it's, it's a, it's a reading for people that just need to have that option and knowing that that is available to them is also important. So I just, I want to thank again the, the people in this council who, who voted for this last time and who allowed that to happen because those people who did take advantage of it, all be a small number, really do appreciate the fact that we allowed that to happen. And it's quite clear that in the past two years since it's been put in place, that it has not actually even cost the city extra money to have it in place. So I really appreciate that. That's it.
Anyone else? Sean, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously.
Ready?
Uh, you know what? I am going to call a break before we go on to eight point three because I need to.
I need to read them a second time.
Oh, so many readings, yes.
Okay, I'm going to go number two.
Second reading, my dear.
Thank you.
Why do I do that? I'm anxious. Can we not just put these organs in? All right, go ahead.
That bylaw thirty slash twenty twenty-two be read a second time.
Anything further?
Nothing.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. Go ahead.
That unanimous consent be given to for third reading of bylaw thirty slash twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Thanks, Ken.
Vote is closed and that passes unanimously. And finally, Counsel Hughes, third reading.
That bylaw thirty slash twenty twenty-two be read a third time. Nothing further.
Call for the first vote. Thank you. Vote is closed and that passes unanimously. So yeah, can I take a fifty-minute break? I just need to make vocal. And you probably all. And you probably all-
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, awesome. All right, uh, we are on eight point three, which is, uh, the maternity and paternal leave for counselors. Mr. Delphar, do you have a presentation on this one?
So Mayor Hara, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation. I do have a, a few very brief comments to make as a supplement to the administrative report that you had before you. That's okay.
You, you, you said you do have some comments before we get into questions?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things, that's all. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, yeah, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so, so I just wanted to point out to council members, and hopefully this is clear in my report. This whole matter of a parental leave bylaw, uh, kinda went through a few twists and turns. Uh, the initial bylaw that came up back in two thousand and nineteen, administration had recommended it at that time for all three readings. It went first, though, to the, what was then known as the Government's Priorities and Finance Committee, and that committee uh, did something we didn't expect. It said, no, no, we want to first refer it to the Council Remuneration Task Force, as it was then known. But don't do it now, they said, wait, wait another year, wait till the next year. So, okay, fair enough. So by the time that next year came along, there was no active task force. It, it had been dissolved. And, um, as a result of, uh, you know, being, I guess, as we all recall, being kind of preoccupied with pandemic-related things for a while, a new Council Remuneration Task Force, uh, actually Committee it's now called, was not created by bylaw until twenty twenty-one. And then shortly thereafter, in twenty twenty-one, there was a renewed council motion to bring forward a parental leave bylaw. So what we have done here is we, we've tried to, we've tried to respect all the directions of council, or at least of the council committee before, and say, okay, we brought forward a bylaw, and I just wanted to say, this is the most important thing I wanted to say, the draft bylaw that's attached to the report you have today, I am confident that if council decided not to refer it to the Remuneration Task Force, if council should decide to pass that bylaw, either today or, you know, first reading today and pass it a little bit later, I'm confident that bylaw works, provided that council agrees with the basic philosophy that council members who do take, um, paternal leave or maternity leave should be entitled to, uh, both the, the length of time off and the benefits during the time they're away. That's as close as possible to what we give our own employees. The bylaw has been drafted based on that philosophy. So if council agrees with that, uh, the, the, the bylaw, that bylaw could be passed now. We've only recommended that it go to the Remuneration Committee, because that's what was recommended. Um, I guess it's getting close to three years ago now. And, and also, I guess, because part of the remuneration task, uh, the Remuneration Committee's mandate is now, since their bylaw was passed, they're supposed to take into account um, the, uh, paternity, paternity leave provisions, particularly in the context of deciding whether they wanna recommend that council members be treated now as full-time rather than part-time as you are now. So, you know, there are, there are, there are logical reasons to refer it, but I wanna emphasize that the bylaw you have now, I am very confident as the draft person, that if that's your philosophy, to treat your own members as nearly as possible the way you treat your employees, this bylaw would do that. I'm very confident. So that's all I wanted to say, and I can answer any specific questions you may have. Oh, one other thing, I haven't said anything about specific levels of benefits. I believe there are people here from Human Resources who could get into more detail if you, if you want to on that. This, this bylaw is just intended to provide a framework for getting you to that end result. And what that means in terms of specific dollars or what percentage of your salary you would get on, if, if you're on parental leave, I will leave it to others to, to get into those details.
Thank you. Uh, we have questions from Councilor Hughes, go ahead.
Hi, hi, Mr. Flur. Um, so it says here eighteen, you that is the matter parental leave for counselors, okay. I misread it. I was like thinking you're off for eighteen months. I was thinking, how does that work? But basically, this bylaw is allowing people to be off for up to a year, correct?
Up to eighteen months.
Up to eighteen months.
Yeah, and that, by the way, just that, that parallels, uh, the changes to the, the Employment Insurance, uh, program that were made just a couple of years ago by the government of Canada. You now under employee, under employee, if you're covered by employment insurance, you have a right to up to eighteen months of absence where you've combined- you have a right to up to eighteen months of absence where you've combined paternity leave and potential maternity leave, including health-related portion. You put it all together, you could be off for as much as eighteen months. And that's, that's just the law, right? No employer can deny you that, right? So that's what our employees get. And so we, we've written the bylaw so that council members would want to take advantage of those, those benefits, would also get potentially up to eighteen months. Doesn't mean you have to take that long. No one has to. It's just that's the potential maximum.
Well, things have changed since I was pregnant last. I only had a year. Um, which tells you something, I suppose.
It's only six months when I had my kids.
Yeah, the, the, the unemployment insurance scheme, uh, when it comes to this kind of benefit, if you look back at the history of it, when it first started back in the, in the nineteen eighties, it was a very small amount. It was like ten weeks. That's all you got, right? So it's really expanded. It really has.
So the other question I had, just for clarification, was, is this, um, necessary? I know it says the MGA, like, it allows it, but does it require us to pass this bylaw in some way, or is there expectation?
That's a very good question, Council Hughes. I appreciate that. No, there's no obligation. What the MGA does, it has an enabling clause. It says, if a council wishes to, you can pass a bylaw to provide for this kind of leave for council members. There's no compulsion to do it. It's, to, to draw the distinction, you have no choice but to have a council code of conduct by law, right? You must have one. The MGA says you must. This is permissive. You don't have to pass a bylaw at all.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Council Bremenski.
Thank you, through the mayor, to, uh, Mr. LaFleur. Um, I have a question about further, um, EI, you know, benefits that you can incur for perhaps, um, looking after an elder at home or, uh, adopting a child or, uh, a sick member of the family. I mean, there's many, many reasons to take a leave from work that this could lead to. Is that not the case?
This one covers adoption.
Adoption, yes, and parental or maternity, yes.
You might want to ask, is HR here to ask that for other types of leave?
Yeah, I can't answer that. I'm not knowledgeable about that.
And I think, but you could answer this, um, Mr. LaFleur, so this would cover paternal, like, so, or adoption, any kind of parental leave. But other kind of leaves, you can answer this, Mr. LaFleur, you, because I can't remember. A council member cannot miss more than X number of meetings without a council motion, right? So is it six?
That's correct. It's, it's actually eight consecutive weeks of council meetings. If, if you miss more than eight consecutive meetings, there's no council motion in advance of that, you know, allowing you to do so, you are disqualified. You're off council right then and there.
And I don't think we have the opportunity to write a bylaw that would, would supersede what the MGA says. But we do have
Remember, remember, if, if, the, the MGA allows council to expand your, your time away. The best example I can give, in a municipality I worked for some time ago, there was a council member who, unfortunately, sadly, came down with terminal cancer that wanted to keep serving as long as he could. And so the council then allowed him to be away longer than eight weeks between meetings, you know, as, as his health would allow. But there needed to be specific council motions for that. And so, yeah, you can still do that as a, as a council, you can make motions, but in the absence of a, you can't, you certainly cannot pass a bylaw generally applying to all council members for other kinds of leave. You don't have that authority.
So does that make sense? So this would apply for parenting, and if you wanted something different, you need a council motion.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
One question, if I could, please. Um, within the city, uh, employment, are all those employees replaced in their position when they're on maternity leave?
That's a question for Ryan.
On maternity and parental leaves, I'd say the majority are backfilled. There are periods of time, um, where there's difficulty to fill, so often we don't get, um, someone on a twelve-month or an eighteen-month leave. We may not get the full period of backfill just because of the replacement timeline.
Thank you. Council Kilik.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, through, through you to, uh, Mr. LaFleur. Just, um, if, if one of council is off on maternity or paternity leave, how, how does the voting go? Like, if we're, we're down to a even number of voting, how, how is a decision? It's a three-three split.
Nothing changes. If it's a tie vote, it fails.
Right. Yes.
Hey, thank you.
All right, I see, and no more questions. We all, um, oh, go ahead, Council Bremenski, go ahead.
Sorry, through the mayor to administration again. Um, it, I know it's been calm and, you know, in workplace where, you know, you can have two or three people off on maternity leave all at once. Uh, in this act, would there be any reference to the number of maternity leaves at one time?
So through the chair, the MGA simply says that council can pass a bylaw providing for parental leave for its members, plural. So there, there's nothing in the act that states that you have to restrict how many at one time. Nothing at all. And certainly, there's nothing in the bylaw that does that, right? Uh, one would, one would imagine it would probably be fairly rare that you'd have more than one, certainly is to have so many off at one time on parental leave that you don't have quorum is a highly unusual situation, but, uh, you know, I guess in theory it could happen, but, uh, there's nothing in the bylaw that addresses, you know, what happens if more than one council member wants to take paternity leave at the same time.
Thank you.
Interesting question. All right, we all got an email from Council Jolly that she would prefer to move the alternative motion, which I'm going to scroll down to.
It doesn't actually have the motion. It would just be first reading of bylaw, whatever the bylaw is.
Yeah, correct. The motion would just be that the bylaw eighteen, I think it's eighteen, um, twenty twenty-two be read a first time.
I think it's thirty-two, twenty twenty-two.
Thirty, okay, yeah.
Council Jolly, you intend to do all three readings today?
Oh, I'll try.
And then it also says under alternative one, then pass a motion to refer the enacted bylaw to the Council of Immunization Review Committee for consideration. Is that part of your plan? Or just want to do the three readings?
I, I would just do, I mean, this, I, I am confident that, um, Mr. LaFleur would send this to the, uh, remuneration committee, um, if, if it passes. So I mean, certainly I could include wording, but I, I'm, I'm sure it will happen no matter what the wording is.
That, that is correct. And the reason, just so I can point out, the reason it would happen is because that is in the remuneration committee by law that this council passed. So it, it's just a question of, do you want them to see it before you pass it? Or do you want them to take it into account in their, in their deliberations after you pass it? One way or another, it's getting to them, either before or after.
All right, I will, uh, allow you to make the motion for first reading, Council Jolly.
So that bylaw thirty-two, twenty twenty-two is read a first time.
All right, I'll accept that in the opening comments.
Yeah, again, very briefly, so five years ago, and Mayor Heron, you and I have had this conversation. Um, I, I don't think I would have supported this bylaw because my experience as a parent was such that I could have balanced my role with having a baby. This organization is incredibly welcoming of children, and I've seen that kind of, uh, especially five years ago when my kids were quite young. Um, but what's changed for me then is, there's, since then, is that I've come to realize, um, that really it was the, the epitome of bias, um, to assume that my personal experience is reflective of the experience of others or that the, the perspective of those whose lives are, are different from mine don't deserve to be supported when they're elected. So i- in making a decision about this bylaw today, we're, we're really making a statement about our values. If it passes, we're saying that we're actively encouraging a wide range of persons to feel supported in running for council. And, and I mean, we all know that that message is particularly impactful for young women that, um, you know, are hugely underrepresented in, in, um, leadership roles like these. Uh, and if it fails, it, it really sends a message that we're hesitant to invite people, um, with privilege that is different to our known to this table. And, and it might even suggest that we don't trust the people who are elected, you know, who have a, a different life situation to ours to, to not take advantage of the role. Um, I, I also want to consider the cost of delaying this bylaw again. So Mr. LaFleur talked about, you know, how are my the, the years that it's take, taken to get to this point. Um, you know, COVID impacted our priorities last term, um, so it was left on the shelf. That's fine, but, um, you know, we, we directed administration to get this bylaw prepared this term. Um, and we discussed the remuneration committee at that time and decided to not go that route. Um, I, I would just ask, you know, how many times do we have to debate this? Um, what is the cost of rehashing this repeatedly, uh, both in terms of staff time and, and our reputation? Um, you know, I think to the term before mine, I think some people in this room have debated this issue upward of five times. And when that happens, people like, like Marta and Cheryl are sitting in the background, um, getting paid while we, while we talk about it, this, the same points over and over. Um, this is also kind of a great time to pass this bylaw because, um, as far as I know, um, all of us are, are very much done growing their families. Um, so there's no personal impact to consider. This isn't going to impact kind of this group of people. Um, you know, through, through multiple terms of council, you know, there, we've include, are supported inclusive policies to, to encourage diverse representation. So my hope is that council will support approving this bylaw, um, which was also supported by those twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-one motions. Um, so we won't have to review this again. Um, so I, I'm just ready to be that council that signals wholeheartedly that, that we mean it when we, we say we want diverse representation. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bremenski. Go ahead.
Um, this is a tough one for me. Um, I haven't had the opportunity to debate this, whether it's been five times or however many times it's been debated. I've not had that opportunity. Um, I support family. Uh, family is a first, and I mean, often we make tou- tough choices in our lives, you know, to work around our family. Um, I had six-month maternity leave. My husband and I, you know, juggled childcare and so on, so we all know what that's about, but council is a different story. I mean, we're elected to represent citizens. Um, it's not a career, shouldn't be a career to be on council. It's, you know, it's, it's not a job. Our re- renumen- uh, remuneration committee, they're there to decide, you know, proper pay for the work that we do, but they're not there to decide if we should be working or not. Um, the difficult thing for me is, is being fair to other council members because if a person takes this eighteen months and, for that matter, could get pregnant again shortly after and be off the whole term, I mean, you're, you're giving your work and you're represented, uh, representing the citizens to, you know, to other council members. So, um, I see it as being elected and not, not taking due care in representing citizens to the best of your ability and making that your number one importance. Again, family, to me, is very, very important. It weighs that out, but we, we make tough decisions in life. And to be a representative to others has to be the number one job of a council member. Uh, as I mentioned in other notes, leaves of, of other types can be brought forward following this, so it could, um, further um, affect other members on council. Um, someone leaving their responsibilities to other people, I see somewhat as a little bit self-regarding. So, again, I can't support this because I don't believe that I would want to hand my, my elected responsibility off to other people when I am there to represent to the best of my ability. So, again, tough decision, but I can't support this.
Um, before we go in any further in debate, uh, Mr. LaFleur, a quick question for you. If first reading fails today, I guess we could still make a motion to refer the concept to our remuneration committee. Or could we pass first reading and then send it to the remuneration committee and then come back for second and third with their proposed, maybe it changes in our amendments. I just don't want to kill this without due process of referring it to this committee.
So you're, uh, through, through you, Madam Mayor to council, uh, your first scenario, if, as it were, if the, if the even first reading doesn't pass, first of all, that would be highly irregular. Uh, first reading is just to get a bylaw on the table. A person who doesn't, doesn't support the bylaw should still vote for it on first reading and then vote against second reading. So just to make that clear. Now, let's suppose it doesn't pass, though. As you say, let's say it doesn't pass at second reading. It's still possible to make a motion to refer, to refer the bylaw, even though it didn't pass, to refer it to the Council of Remuneration Committee, and then they could come back with a recommendation, either to pass it nevertheless, or to pass it with amendments or, or whatever, right? So yes, it could still, even if it does not pass today, it could still go back, it could still be referred to the Council of Remuneration Committee. And that, by the way, would not require a motion, right? Because the, the, uh, the Council of Remuneration Committee bylaw already says that they are to take into account parental leave in their determination of whether it is, the time has come to make council members full-time or not. It would simply restrict, without a motion, it would simply restrict the scope of their review of parental leave to strictly the full-time counselor scenario. If you wanted them to consider parental leave more broadly, you should pass a motion uh, to, to ask them to do that, as, as is the motion that's, uh, suggested in the report.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for the reminder that first reading is just put on the floor. And we should be voting in favor to just have that on the floor, and then we can vote it down in second.
Yeah.
And don't forget, council, there's also unanimous consent involved today, so that, that plays into. Sorry to interrupt. I just thought some of this might factor into your decision-making. All right, Council Kilik, go ahead.
Uh, quite simply, I'm amazed that this was not already part of our standard process, um, or standard rules or whatever standard leave, a policy coming from private, um, business. The, the, this is normal everywhere. I, I'm amazed that it, it's on the table today and, because I would have guessed a mil- or bet a million dollars that it was already part of our, uh, standard, uh, common way we, um, cover our, our counselors, the same as we cover our employees. So I'll, uh, you know, first reading, obviously support it, but support it going ahead as well. I'm just even surprised we're debating it at all.
Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Supported before, supported today. Uh, this is about, um, ensuring that, uh, the, uh, uh, the position of city councillor in the city of St. Albert is open to all. And, uh, we need to make that statement and be seen to be making that statement within our community. Um, and certainly agree with, uh, uh, Council Jolly and her statements coming forward. So, thank you.
Council Hughes.
Uh, thank you. I think I remember when this came forward, all the guys voted in favor of it, and the women didn't, and it passed in a four-three. So was, certainly wasn't unanimous as it came forward. Um, the concerns I had before, I, I maintain, and since we've, since we developed this, um, hybrid ability with the Zoom meetings, it's much easier for somebody to be actually able to work from home if they had to, if they had care issues. Even if they had someone there looking after the child, you could still actually zoom in for the majority of the meeting, even for most meetings. The problem I have is just that when you take this position, whether you plan to get pregnant or not during the four years, sometimes things just happen. But you do it with an expectation that you are going to represent the community for the full four years to the best of your ability. And I just don't see that leaving for up to eighteen months would serve anybody well. So, yes, things happen, and I've talked to counselors who have been pregnant, who got surprise pregnant during their first term. And they took the child with them. The baby just came with them for everything they could, and they moved around it. So I, I have a difficult time thinking that we should have a standard that somebody should be allowed to be gone for eighteen months. And I understand that children are very important, and I have three, and I stayed home with them, but I would have found, if I was on council, I would have found a way to work around it. And if there was extraordinary circumstances, then certainly that person could come to council and say, I need an extended leave. That's happened in other councils, um, not for children, but just in general. But I think the making a standard saying that they can be gone for eighteen months, that, that six people would then fill the gap for the seventh. I just, especially when there's so many abilities now to work from home. I just, especially when there's so many abilities now to work from home as necessary. It's not just about being inclusive, it's about taking your responsibility to this position seriously enough that you'd actually want to do it for the full four years. And I think about Bob Russell, who has recently passed and he had a hip replacement. And he was given six weeks off from the doctor and he took two. The man came in with catches and said, no, and I said, you can take more time off, Bob. And he said, I'm coming in. Like, that's the level of dedication that people who take this position want. This is a position that you worked really hard for to just have this seat. And I don't think that anybody would, and I, I realize it's up to eighteen months and people probably wouldn't take it. But I also just don't want the public to think that their counselors may be going away for eighteen months. And that, that's my challenge I have here. This is not about a job. This is about a reset of responsibilities. That need to be carried through for the full term that you're going to do it. And that's what you sign on for. And that's why I have a challenge supporting this today. I'll do first reading as Mr. LaFleur indicated, but I have a real challenge with the other two.
Council Jolly, you and I've had this conversation over the last five years and I, and. Yeah, you know where I stand on this, you know, it's funny because the women are sitting here saying, um, no, no maternity leave. And it's not that I don't think that somebody deserves maternity leave and Councilor Mantsky brought up. The perfect question about, you know, how do we, how do we grant leave, whether it's for sick parents or not? And, and I, I would say that this council and any future council would be accommodating of that. I am a hundred percent in agreement with, with both my colleagues that have spoken in, with trepidation on this bylaw. That this is not a job, it's, um, it's not a career, it's a privilege to sit here. You do work hard. And you, you know, I've seen so many examples since, since MGA changed and these. These bylaws have been brought in municipalities across Alberta. I've seen lots of women get pregnant and have babies and never skip a beat. The best example I could give you is Sarah Hamilton in Edmonton, gave birth in August of last year. Uh, continued to campaign and ran for election, won and has brought that baby to work, has, it's been on her lap virtually. She hasn't skipped a beat. And so that's what I think. The commitment to the job is all about, and I, and I think that's what residents would hope for. The, the biggest problem is you can't replace that person. And now you've got six members of council, um, backfilling committees. And, and I don't see any reason why you can't have a baby and continue this job. That's, I guess that's the bottom line. It's, it, that's the best part about this job is you can do both. And, um, so I'm not sure where, where this vote's going to go. But I know I would really love to actually get the remuneration committee's. Thoughts on especially the length of time. I could see giving. X number of months or X number of meetings with, before you come back and ask for more or something like that. But we haven't, we haven't bounced that around with, with the overall mix of, um, how we get compensated. To be on council. And of course, it's very different if we, we turn into a full-time council versus part-time. So I, you know, I'll, I'll do first reading and, um. Potentially we'll see where second reading goes, but probably won't give unanimous consent. And I'll then actually, if I'll pass the chair off and, and make the motion that, or if somebody else wants to do it, that Mr. LaFleur came up with. So Council Jolly. Generally, we're so aligned on so many things with this one, I just, I have a hard time with, so. Anything to close?
Yeah, just, just really briefly, um, I was completely in agreement with you. Up until probably pretty recently. When I, it really hit home to me that my experience and your experience and Council Hughes's experience as a mom. Does not reflect everyone and it's unfair to, to say that it does. I think that all three of us had the, the types of babies that yes, absolutely, we would be like Sarah Hamilton with a baby on her knee. But to, to say that that, that is the experience of, of everyone taking a leave. Is again, really falling into that, that problem of, of bias. And so I, I would challenge everyone to, to really recognize that. This bylaw, I think, would only really apply to people who need it. You know, Council Hughes used the example of, of, uh, Bob Russell, who, who came in because he was able to. I am absolutely confident that anyone who really put their hand up to serve for this permission, position would do the same, um, if they were able. And, and would only use this type of leave. Bob would only have used his six weeks if he needed it. And, and that's the type of person who runs for council. So, um, you know, I, I'd echo Council Killick's comments that I'm just, I'm flabbergasted that we're even still having this conversation five years later. So, um, I, I won't kind of comment on second reading, but, um, tho- those are my comments when, when we get to that, that point, just to, to keep that in mind.
All right, I'm calling for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes by a majority with Councilor Mantsky opposed. Do you want to keep going?
Sure, that, oh gosh, where's me here? That bylaw thirty-two, twenty-twenty-two is read a second time.
Madam Mayor, a point of. It, it would, if, if you're intending to make a motion to move, uh, to refer this to the, uh. Remuneration committee, would that be more appropriate before the second reading or after second reading?
I think, uh, you can make amendments at third reading, can you not, Mr. LaFleur?
Yeah, you, you, yeah, through the chair, yes, you, you can make amendments at third reading. I think the, the, if I understand Council Broadhead's question though, uh, it is try to, you know. To reconcile passing the bylaw today and referring to the committee. So you could do both, right? You, you could pass the bylaw today and refer to the committee with a motion for to have them consider it broadly. Right? In the, in the broad context of council remuneration benefits, you could do that. Uh, and, and so, no, this up, it's, it's not necessary that that motion occur now. It could occur at any time, really.
Fair enough, thank you.
Was there an or?
No, no, I'm just gonna, I'm just going to say there's, the, the two are not mutually exclusive. You could pass the bylaw, give it all, give it all three readings today, uh, or not, and either way, uh, refer to the committee.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we got second reading on, did you read second reading into the record? Okay, right. And you had nothing further? Okay. Anyone else have anything on second reading? Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that one passes by majority with Council Hughes and Vermatzky opposed. Uh, are you going to do sec- unanimous consent, even though I've indicated I won't be supportive?
Yeah, I'll try for it for sure. Oh, you, yeah, you don't want unanimous consent, so that, will this be brought forward to our next meeting then? Is that the idea?
Well, I, I will pass the chair off and make this motion to refer it to the committee or if, or Council Hughes might want to do that.
I, I, I guess to ask Mr. LaFleur, usually when we have two readings, it goes to kind of the next available media. Is that not what we would do in this case?
In, in this case, if nobody makes a motion for unanimous consent. Then clearly the bylaw goes no further in this meeting. And then it would be, what happens after that depends on whether someone makes a motion to refer the bylaw that's had only. Either one or two, I guess it's had two readings out, to refer the bylaw that had two readings to the committee. And, and so if, if no such motion passes, then this would come back to the next meeting.
Okay.
For consideration of third reading.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, am I passing the chair? Are you gonna make this? Okay, Council Hughes, go ahead.
Okay, just for simplification, especially, I will just do this. So I would like to see that the third reading of draft bylaw thirty-two slash twenty-twenty-two maternity and parental leave for councillors. Be referred to the council remuneration review committee for consideration of how maternity leave and parental leave entitlement should fit into the overall matrix. The council paying benefits and for recommendations, if any, regarding revisions to the draft bylaw before it's presented to council for the first reading.
Third reading.
For, for the third.
For third, for third, yeah.
Third reading.
Yeah, question, go ahead.
Uh, just for clarification, uh, should the word draft still be in it, being as we pass first and second?
It, it is not fall the way through.
Yeah, I think it's the exact same motion, except we're changing first reading to third reading at the very end.
Yeah, I'm just being picky on num-
Isn't that what you read?
I think it's still a draft till we approve it on the third.
That's right.
Is that correct, Mr. LaFleur? Is it still read a draft even in, or, uh?
To be very honest, it really doesn't matter. You know, you can call it a draft bylaw because it hasn't been passed. You can call it the bylaw. Either way, if this motion passes, it's going to the committee. It's not, it's not a, it's not a major point.
Appreciate that, thank you. Just wanted to be sure.
Isn't it the, it's, did she read exactly as it is here? Okay, okay. I missed that. All right. Go ahead, Council Hughes.
Okay, so, uh, Council Jolly, I totally respect what you're trying to accomplish today and where this, how this vote goes. I think that it's honorable. That being said, I think that the remuneration review committees are reformed. This is not going to have an extraordinary delay. This is not like years from now. It's coming into play and it will be discussed in the upcoming months. There also is, as we've noted, nobody here that's expecting, um, or is expecting to be expecting in the next couple of months. So it does, there, it's not going to change anything, whether this comes now or it comes back later, it doesn't change anything. So there isn't a huge urgency to have all three readings passed this time. And I would like to hear, especially since I have hesitancies. I would like to hear what the committee has to say about this before third reading is passed and to look at any issues about like. One of the concerns I have is the length of time, just like Mayor Heron has, and I would like to have their input on that before we go for third. So we'll put on the tables, see what you think, we'll see the vote goes, or we go to third. That's it.
All right, anyone for, anyone want to add to this? Council Jolly, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess I, I'm opposed to this and that's why I brought forward first and second reading. Because I think ultimately council making this decision is showing leadership in terms of our, our support. For people who have different experiences than ours. Having the choice to, to sit, um, on council and, and represent St. Albert. And if we want that diversity, this is really an opportunity to share that message that that's important to us. Um, and passing it off sends a message that if, I'm not sure if I actually want that kind of diversity. Um, and, and that's not a message I want to send to our community, that's all.
Anyone else on debate? Anything to close?
Yeah, this isn't about diversity. This is just about whether or not that this type of leave should be granted and for how long and under what benefits. We're talking about benefits, not about who should be on council, whether you're pregnant or not, or you're expecting or not. You're welcome on council. It's about how much leave we should be giving. And I just wanted, I think it's reasonable to ask the committee for an opinion because there is no impetus to have this done today.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Motion passes by majority with Council Broadhead and Council Jolly opposed. Okay. Uh, we had no emergent motions that I'm aware, but we do have. We do have one, um. Council motion from Council Vermatzky. So Council Vermatzky, I'll get you to read it. And then before I accept it, we'll do the questions and then, uh, I'll accept and you can go into opening arguments.
That administration annually and by the end of quarter to provide to council as an agenda item at council meeting. A list of all consultants contracted in the previous calendar year, the cost for each and a re- a brief rationale for hiring.
All right, before I take that, uh, motion, is there any questions from council to either our staff or to Council Vermatzky herself? Council Hughes.
Thank you. It's a question to staff. So I'm trying to figure out how it would take fifty-two hours to prepare this report. Because in, in my mind, I would have someone send out an email to all the directors. Tell them that this is the new standard, tell them this is the format that they need to input it by, by this date. And then send forward an email that's going to be pre-populated to go forward ten days before the deadline, reminding them, other one Fridays for the deadline. One, two days after the deadline, saying that this has to be done. And then you already have it in the format and then you compile it. And then, and then review it to verify that it was accurate. So I'm trying to figure out how that would, if, what method you're doing that would accumulate to fifty-two hours. It's different from how I'm doing it in my brain.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I'm Stella Tam and I am the Financial Operations Controller for Accounts Payable and Treasury. In response to, uh, Council Hughes, um, fifty-two hours that we have estimated from our original IR that we had compiled. Um, included approximately thirty-seven hours for the finance staff to set up, uh, organize the data. Generate reports and then review some invoices, um, hold discussions with the departments and then the final review of the report. Um, we estimate about fifteen hours for the other departments to spend to review the data and compile the reasoning for the consulting costs.
And so now that you've done it once, I said, so I understand that you, you're basing it on the previous, like the first time you do anything is always the longest. So now that you've done it once, do you still think it would take you fifty-two hours to repeat the process? Or do you think you'd actually have a, a system that would handle it a bit easier now?
In response to that, um, I think we did do a little bit, uh, more of a setup. But it really depends every year on how many, um, transactions we have. And, um, the number of invoices we have to review to confirm that it is indeed consulting costs. Um, and then I guess it depends how long the departments take to respond. Um, with regards to what, if they could come up easily with what the consulting costs were for.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there any further questions? Council Jolly.
Thank you. And this is to Council Vermatzky and, you know, if you're addressing this in debate, that's, that's great. But, um, wh- what do you see is the purpose of this report in terms of governance?
I see the purpose of this report in terms of governments, uh, governance as, um, showing council. Uh, showing the citizens where two million dollars is spent a year on consultants. Um, I mean, the report that I first requested, um, was requested in April. Uh, I received an answer in June of not quite a complete report. And then, uh, the complete report came out in August. And when I saw hundreds of consultants listed and, and two million dollars. I thought, is everything, you know, is every consultant on the list needed? Do departments see what other departments are doing as far as consultants? I think it's a learning process for everyone to, um, to understand. We have, we have a lot of staff at the city. Consultants are needed, but sometimes they're not needed. So it's, it's, it's just getting it out in the open. Uh, getting people to dissect what consultants are beh- being hired and what they're hired for. And to me, hopefully, cost savings as far as governance. And, um, fifty-two hours I see as, um, you know, a bargain when you're comparing it to. You know, two million dollars in consultants fees. So again, I understand the need, but I think that we need to make it, uh, available for the public to see the need and understand the need.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Council Mackay, a question?
Yeah, I do have a question and just more of a curiosity. So when the auditor comes in and audits us every year, how, how are these? Are these? These captured anywhere, uh, either to Stella or Ms. Morty? Or how do we, how do we record these for the accountant? Auditor, I mean.
And you, uh, Mister, I'm Council West, Councilor West Broadhead. With the auditors, they do do testing of accounts and it may, they may choose that account. We're not sure, but it is in our accounting system and they can hold that account if they, um, is part of their testing.
So they would only use it as a test? They wouldn't use it as a, we wouldn't just add or have that information? They would just require it based on whatever cost center it was at then?
Right, and, and I can, I can add to that as well. So the auditors will do sampling of different accounts and really they're looking to ensure we have correct approvals in place. Um, it's within the budget. Um, you know, everything's been signed off and it paid accordingly. So, and, and that could involve a consulting account or a travel account. Or it could be a, a multitude of different accounts that they're sampling.
Thanks, Anne. So for the purposes of the city, we don't have a separate line item. Or, um, accounts where we bring in co- uh, consultants, uh, for. organization wide, we would do it just basically on the profit center or the cost center number?
Yeah, correct. It's by, yeah, it's by the department or the cost center. Correct.
So we don't have a way of searching that for, to create one cumulative uh, kind of account, it wouldn't be the same cost center number across different uh, different departments? And that you couldn't just search that and that, and just populate it?
Yeah, yeah, we could. So we have, you know, main account called consulting. And then it's um, broken down by department. So yes, we can search by the consulting uh, cost center. Um, and then it's, you know, we can see it by department and it's cumulative. But where all the work comes in is when we have to send it to those departments to get additional text or information relating to those consulting costs.
Okay, so it's this second part of the actual motion that the purpose or, and reporting kind of that, the actual costs we can get quite easily, it's the actual other part of the motion.
The detail, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, any more questions? I'm seeing none. Okay, accept your motion, Council Bramansky. Go ahead.
Um, I just feel this will bring clarity to um, you know, what we're spending money on in consultants. Uh, some of them actually in the list, you know, that I was going through were um, consulting fees that were, you know, used to provide information to council. Some of them I saw value in, some of them I didn't see any value in at all. Um, consultants often provide a report. Sometimes we use the report, sometimes we don't. So I think it, just by bringing it all out in the open, it will bring clarity to value in consultants. So that's, that's my purpose is just to, to bring the value in consultants, not just falling to consultants for, for many, many choices and sometimes not every choice that's um, that's actually needed. So again, just clarity, information for administration, information for council, information for the public. It's good to see where our dollars are going. So that's my argument. Thank you.
Council Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to support this motion. Um, I think that we can, I think we can beat the fifty-two hours moving forward. I think there's a system that can come into play that we could make it much more efficient. Um, you know, the, the public really, sometimes the public says that all, you're wasting all this money consultants. You'll see all this and you know, and they don't know what's being spent or why. And so to bring it down to this is what's actually being spent, this is why it's necessary, provide some enlightenment instead of just people assuming certain numbers are there or assuming that it's being, in their opinion, wasted. And then you can say, no, actually, this is what we're spending it on and this is why we're spending it. And sometimes people may disagree about that, but at least they have an understanding of how this money is coming forward. And the second thing is that sometimes there may be few times where consultants have been used, which may not have been necessary. And if you know if something's coming to light, that's going to be presented to the public, you behave differently. It's not about staff doing anything, this is just public nature. As soon as you know that something's going to be brought to light, you think about it twice before you do it. And so then we can be more assured that the, what's bringing brought forward is something we can justify to the public because they know it's coming before the public for justification. And so it works both ways. And, and so as far as the governance goes, I think this is actually helpful. The more things that we can put into light, the more we can be assured the public knows what's going on, the more transparent we are with what we're doing. And the more we know that what's being brought forward will be brought forward knowing has to be justified, which means it's more likely to be actual savings or value brought forward from the consultants that are done. This isn't about stopping the use of consultants, it's just about explaining, providing a full disclosure of what's actually occurring on annual basis. And so, and then having that opportunity to ask, why did you do this? What's justification? And enlighten both council and the public as to why that decision was made and what value we got from that decision. And so I think that this is actually going to alleviate some of the assumptions that people make when they assume that people are just quote, wasting money on consultants because in many cases they're necessary, but they don't know for what or what was presented for it. So I think that this is actually helpful. That's it.
Anyone else on debate? Go ahead, Council Jolly.
Thanks. So um, I, I completely agree that we, we sometimes need consultants. Um, but you know, just like hiring permanent staff, um, we've hired a C A O to, to kind of deal with those administrative details. Um, we're, we're already getting an H R report and we already get an audit. And so you know, to, to cover our, our due diligence, I, I, I would expect the C A O to make decisions that, that impact all services that we provide, not just consultants, but also permanent staff. And, and so I, I, I don't see um, the value in increasing our costs um, to, to get into the weeds. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, seeing no one else, I'm just going to add my two cents. I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't get questions about the use of consultants very often. I, I think council approves and when we approve um, project charters or business cases, we know they're, they're, the questions are easily answered if, if a member of the public does ask the question. I think the nuances and why we hire um, consultants over using staff is, is difficult often to explain to the public. And I feel like having a report like this might even cause more confusion and more angst and more um, questions. And so, you know, honestly, the value that we're going to get out of this fifty-two hours is just not there for me. And if, if, if it was easy, like, like, like that some think it might be, maybe I would consider it, but this, our staff have said it's not easy. And fifty-two hours is time spelt, spent elsewhere, especially when we're hearing that our staff are stretched to the limit at this time. Council Bramansky, do you close?
Um, thank you. And I want to thank uh, Council Hughes for being probably more clear than me on this one. But um, thank you for that. Um, fifty-two hours is so minor. You know, I mean, even though it seems like a lot to generate this report, it's very, very minor in comparison to the savings that could be found here. Um, it just opens eyes to what, you know, and maybe makes that person in that department think, well, is there another way but this consultant report is? Can I, you know, bring the consultant team down to two people instead of seven or eight people that, you know, and use up every last dollar in the consultant fee? So I mean, there's, there's many, many cost savings that could be found in this. And I mean, that's what I'm here to do is, is find cost savings for the um, you know, the taxpayer, represent the taxpayer, let them know where their tax dollars are going. And again, um, I see great value in this because it's a very, very, very long list that I hope would be a little bit shorter at some point in time. So again, um, I hope that council will support me on this clarity to the public and to um, citizens of St. Albert, where this, you know, two million dollars on, on one report is actually going. And, and again, it's a, a lot of money. We're trying to cut millions of dollars to um, redirect uh, uh, more palatable budget. And um, uh, even if we can find five hundred thousand dollars, you know, that's, that's a quarter of it kind of thing. It's, it's two million dollars to me is an exponential amount of money on consultants in a short period of time. So again, uh, I'd like to just bring it to the forefront. Uh, I don't want to send information requests every couple of months asking where it's at. So a yearly report, just like a budget report would be highly appreciated. And um, I hope that other council members would agree that it would be uh, beneficial to all of us. Thank you.
Call for the vote? Voting's closed. That motion passes by majority with Council Jolly and myself opposed. Uh, I have a feeling we've got quite a few things to discuss under Gen I to eleven, information request, notices, motions and announcements. So I think I tried to save all of them, but I will open it up. Um, Council Bramansky, I'll start with you. Do you have any I Rs or notices of motion? Can't remember.
No.
Nothing. Okay, Council Broadhead, you had nothing either? Okay, Council Kilic, why don't we go to you?
Just started with the I Rs.
Sure.
Um, the, okay. First one's fairly easy. I think uh, it's the I R on hydrovacquing. And note that the Badgerlands report that we just uh, reviewed states that we use this location for hydrovac wa- waste dumping from our own hydrovac truck of oil and grit interceptor waste. And I also see we have issued, recently issued a tender for external hydrovac of oil and grit interceptor cleaning under I T T twenty twenty-two zero one oh eight. And if we could please advise the budget efficiencies of contracting out first in our, versus using our own internal hydrovac truck and crew.
All right, is that something we can answer now or does it need to be an I R?
Yeah, we should, we would prefer to take it as an I R.
Okay, all right. Go ahead with your next one.
Uh, next one is uh, just to give the background, I recently noticed that there are construction signs up along a portion of Giroux and Giroux is our um, current detour route for heavy truck traffic, uh, emergency vehicles, et cetera. So the I Rs is worded as Giroux is currently a very heavily used designated detour route while Villeneuve is closed and under construction. And McKennie is under construction. Is this work scheduled so it does not impact detour traffic on Giroux? Approximately two weeks ago, um, the city paving crew leveled the pavement at one of the drains that is now marked to be replaced. Is this most cost efficient work scheduling? And a quick look at some of the storm drains and I provided pictures um, et cetera, being marked for replacement to not appear to be in need of imminent repl- replacement. From a budget perspective, what is the cr- criteria that determine these need to be replaced at this time?
Thank you. Um, I will defer to Donnie online.
So we can answer that in chambers who don't need an I R in that one?
I, I believe we can answer about the vast majority of that.
Awesome.
Sorry, through the chair to Council Kilic, I would take that as an I R. Um, because those implications on the, on the utility side, which I don't have information right now. Sorry.
That's okay. That, that's okay, whatever, whatever.
Always listen to the experts, I think is the takeaway from that.
Uh, I'm happy to defer to the experts and.
And then you had two more that you didn't send in as I Rs, one on a tree and one on shrubs. So why don't you go with those now?
Sure.
Yeah.
Just uh, just a general question, I guess uh, in particular on the shrubs along St. Albert Trail. Uh, this kind of um, builds on our, Council Mackay's and my questions of a couple of weeks ago, uh, along the, the grass along St. Albert Trail by the sound barrier wall. It noted that a vast majority of the shrubs in the um, boulevard sec, the, the, yeah, boulevard, I guess, or center median of St. Albert Trail are completely dead. And they, uh, my, my question is, are, are these under warranty from the contractor? Same as we were told the grass is under, kind of, or shrubs were under two-year warranty on the sound barrier portion? Or are those now, those dead shrubs? And I think everybody that drives along there can see that it's probably more than fifty percent of them are dead. Are, is this a contractor to remediate? Or does this become a city of St. Albert's um, operating budget item?
I think the center median was done years ago. Yeah. So it's probably ours.
Yeah. So um, through worship and to Council Kilic, um, we'll take that as an I R as we just have to identify which areas are which. Um, so which shrubs are which and stuff like that, because some would be under warranty, some wouldn't. So um, parks and uh, engineers asked for an I R for that one. Okay.
Yeah, it, it, it's pretty much from, you know, down at Sterling Sound Barrier Wall and all the way up to uh, Giroux, so.
You're, you're talking in the center median.
Yeah, center median. Center median.
Definitely our city stuff. Yeah. Because I made that motion, I think my first term. Yeah.
Leave it as an I R.
Yeah, leave it as an I R. Yeah.
Okay. And uh, last one, a pretty simple one, I think. Just, just driving down Hogan Road, uh, noticed a mature tree. Um, and we all value our trees and St. Albert was totally cut down. And it's, it was well back from the school board, speed change, uh, flashing lights. I was just surprised that it was cut down by, by, to look, looking like it's giving better visibility that, to that uh, that, to sign. It, it was a, was it cut down for that reason or for some other reason? And if, if it, if it's a new standard that we're making better lines of sight, how many other trees would be affected by, or, or cut down to, in that, that regard?
Well, thank you. Um, question, uh, your worship through to uh, Council Kilic. No, uh, trees are not uh, cut down for, for better lines of sight. Um, it would be our last resort to do that. In this case, the tree was damaged uh, prior to it being cut down. Um, we still don't have a reason why the, the damage has not been determined. However, um, pruning would be the first um, step in those cases. And then eventually, if it was something that um, where there was no, there's no way of getting around it, the tree would probably get relocated if it was small enough. So before it would get uh, cut down.
So damaged as in like hit by a car? Damaged or?
It may have been hit by a car, but uh, it was, my understanding is that it was uh, it was um, what do they say, trees removed due to damage. Uh, it wa- it had been snapped in the middle and could not be saved.
No, I, I just reviewed my dash cam video and it looked pretty healthy to me, but hey, what do I know?
And you had um, one potential um, motion that you wanted to notice motion? Do you want to wait on that one?
Uh, yeah, under, under advisement of Mr. Hill's or, and uh, and Mr. Fletcher, they said that they would like some time to work on the, the wording for it to get it actually a little bit better. And it was, so it's going to take us two years to get the answer. I'll, I can wait two weeks to get the better wording for it. Okay.
All right, so that, that's it for you. Did I cover all his I Rs? You guys keep track. All right, Council Mackay.
I don't really have one, but I guess if we're going to look at the shrub beds, I did notice that the other one on uh, Boudro from the River West to um, I guess, Bellrose is also pretty, pretty dead. So if you're going to be looking at it, maybe you have just touched base with that one. I, I just think it was a kind of a hard, hard year.
Yeah. Uh, Council Hughes.
Yeah, so I, last week I sent a thing in about the buses. And I don't know if you guys have any updates or if you have somebody on transit. Cause I didn't say I was going to ask it today, but it's, it's an issue. Is the two oh four for the university was canceled? But the kids are getting, I call them kids, they're grownups, but nonetheless, in my mind, they're young. The students are, the buses are filling up to the point where the students can't get on the buses because they're at past capacity. So is there any intention to put the two oh four back? Or what are we doing for the buses to get to the university? Are we just going to just let it go? Because I know students that are um, missing classes. I know students are now getting parking passes and not planning to use transit because of the issues they're having, because they can't afford to not be at their classes when they need to get to their classes. So do, um, do we have a plan for what we're doing? Or what is the expectation for the kids?
Counselor, so we do not have a plan to brief you today, except to say that you've identified it and we're looking into what can be done.
Okay.
Jay's up on the screen there.
Oh.
Jay, go ahead.
Awesome.
Yeah, we weren't, we, sorry, through the, through, through the mayor to uh, Council Hughes. So we are answering the C I, but essentially what, what it is, is two or four is not canceled. Uh, it started today, which was in line with City of Edmonton. Um, so just to kind of clarify, the two oh four, City of Edmonton's schedule had all of their, their fall schedules starting on Tuesday the sixth today. And so we mirrored that uh, for the two days last week, we actually had people on site uh, as well as overload buses available. So I'm not sure if there was a confusion with an individual, et cetera. But um, they should have been directed to wait for the second bus that would have been pulling up behind that first bus. But essentially, yeah, the, the, as of today, everything's running full bore.
Okay, so just the past, they were, both buses were full past capacity. And then they were waiting, they were like, um, in some cases, like coming home at two o'clock um, on the Friday, there were twenty people that couldn't get on either bus and we're waiting for the next, next round to come in. So you're saying that as of today, that there should be more buses available?
The two oh four is running as well as we still have people on site, um, making adjustments if overloads are needed.
Okay, so we have the two oh four running as well now, is that correct?
Yeah, all, all, all fall schedule buses are running uh, in full as of today. Yeah, all, all, all fall schedule buses are running uh in full as of today.
Can you just humor me for a minute and just tell me? Um, okay, so the two or threes come at quarter twenty after and quarter two. What time is the two oh four come, leave the university?
I guess. I have to go back. I unfortunately have to check the schedules on that.
Okay, it's because the, I keep also hearing like the classes get off at twenty after and ten two. So like they literally miss that time, they have to go to the next round to be able to catch it and the time changed last year and I'm just not sure. Um, what the idea, like the thought process was it or why is it the Edmonton's not letting us do a different time because it's. Typically, you do ten minutes after the class is leaving, you catch that bus. Now they have to wait half an hour to catch the next bus because. The, the classes end at the buses can't reach for the classes end.
Okay, I guess I'd, I'd have to look into that a bit further to find out exactly the, the differences. Um, if there is an individual that that is uh providing this information, we could, if you could have him phone us directly, we could actually help him out a bit further if needed.
Yeah, I mean, this is like all students are complaining about this, like this isn't just one person, like all of them get off at ten two and the bus comes a quarter two. So then, yeah, that kind of thing. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, why we did that and apparently it just changed last year. So. Um, I did send it and a council inquiry. I was thinking if you can answer it, but if you want to continue to look into it and get back to me, that would be awesome because. There's only a couple of thousand students that would love to have that answer, I think, so.
Yeah, we'll include that in the C I response for you.
Cool. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Counsel Jolly, anything from you? Motions, I Rs?
No, I might have motions, but administration is working on it. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So next week you're thinking for next meeting? Okay. All right, that is it for Agenda Item eleven unless we have any announcements. Okay. Uh, I need a motion to go in camera for our C A O dialogue, which I've heard is light, a light agenda, which is good. Okay, Counsel Broadhead, go ahead.
The camera, uh, that council moving camera. You have a confidential dialogue with Chief Administrative Officer pursuant to Section twenty-four one A. The Freedom of Information Privacy Act and thanks for popping up this. The font that was squinting away there, so.
Awesome, call for the vote? Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. All right, we will see you in Council Lounge. Are you going to make me the host? Set the plan? Plan Stan?